We're appointed to serve.
Six.
Yes, that requires six.
May I make a motion?
I can't do it.
We still have to discuss.
Yeah.
Stop.
These damage claims are lame. The damage claims in reference of the school backup.
There are a number of them. There are a number of defendants to them are sued back. Don't discuss more than that during the meeting.
Again, the threshold that we have put on there was five thousand dollars.
By resolution, the council put a six thousand dollar threshold first. Sue her back if you can.
So anything over six thousand dollars require us approval?
Correct.
So if we go into executive session now, we will be going into executive session to discuss those that's over six thousand.
Correct.
Thank you. Would anyone else like the floor at this time? Seeing as no one else would like the floor, could you please say one more time why we want to executive session for the Michael Lee Mayor?
Yes, thank you again to discuss damage claims, the city and the possible settlement of damage claims the city has received regarding various matters which are over six thousand dollars is counted in the review.
May I?
Yes.
Make a motion to table this until after the resolution.
This motion on the floor has been properly supported by the county woman in the sixth order. Roll call. Mr. Allen?
Yes. No.
Yes. The chat? Yes. The vice?
Yes. Yes.
The vote is five yes, one no, that has been tabled until after the resolution. It is now time for a public comment. Is there anyone who wishes to address the council at this time? Who's our first public speaker, Matt Clark? The first speaker is Bernie Lorenzo.
I'm a senior citizen, but I'm not senile. I'm of age to be called senile. So the reason for my privilege is that I call a house from a lead back. There's, it's not a year. But I have trees that are hanging over my house. I have lead in my house and they were supposed to come and remove the lead. They took my TV show people like what ladies and I did a study where everybody was writing to children. I have forty-four grandchildren and I'm not able to let them come in the house because I talk about now. It's drastic, so I was trying to do what my father told me. He says that you have to love your brothers and sisters like yourself and you wouldn't do nothing to them if you wanted to. Now I started with mice up my house. I have mice come down to the side of the house. I bought a lot of stuff to put that's supposed to kill mice, but they. The side view is very, I'm sorry, could you please pause the time one moment, man? Yes.
What are they in the building?
Thank you. Go ahead, man. Yeah, the side of the house is new, right? I have four trees hanging over my house that fall at any time. I have a pool, lead back above the trees. They tried to offer, ask you do I want to buy? I don't have a good value. So by move by, they'll take them all if they fall in my house, they will be responsible for it. So it's, I'm at the end of the block. Eleven three twenty-one is fake, I'm at the end of the block. So it's no house next to me and none behind. It's just the chip, the ground chip and I was able to let them come in here and I can see them. It's not because two trees have broken the hay in my yard. And every time I call, I get, I call at least fourteen times. And they keep saying they go to look into it, look into it. But so far they haven't, so I don't think there's any type of love for somebody to go home. I know there's been a nightmare this year that the sun must be done, but I can guarantee that no man is here could sit in the stairwell, could not sleep because of the mice at night and try to get out. So the mice is coming from the outside. I know I'm not in there, you feel it in my house, oh my God. But the sign is old and now it's older for the long, my mice go out. The color can come into my house. So if someone had helped me, now most people think the three or six, no one anything. They just view the big building to stay in and they make, give them a lot of games. They don't go inside, we can inside walk, we do something outside, something normal. And especially my grandkids, I love my four and four, but it's four and three, four and four anyway. I love my grandkids, I have been able to let them come over and spend the night in due to the lead and I did the study in the lead and I found out they used to, so they came from the stairwell. So if there's anything that's fun to do to get the lead going, to get my house in a normal condition, I'm not trying to ask for it to be spectacular, but just be a little more decent. Another issue, yeah. Thank you so much. Next up, speaker, please.
The next speaker is Arden Mitchell.
Hello, man. I'm Arden Mitchell. I live at seven fifty-nine East St. Avenue, Oklahoma, North Side, Third Ward, between Third Ward and Ward one. And listen here, I woke up this morning, warned the Blue Bell Beach, I mean warned Crossroad Village to the senior citizen, appreciate whatever they, but as I thought about it, I'm not senile just because I'm a senior citizen. But I would have been senile if I would have got off that Columbus Street bus and walked on that trail to Blue Bell Beach in all that hot sun before I got to Crossroad Village. I thought about it, so I decided to go to Golden Gate instead. And on the way to Golden Gate, I went in there, ordered a special breakfast because I don't have much money in my pocket. But, but when I got to meet him, he said, sir, if you take care of some woman, I said, enjoy your breakfast, sir. And walked out the door, talking, a woman of color. But I'm kind of saying, a recent senior citizen, but on the way out of the restaurant, I ran into a little brother named Juanas Davis. He told me to remember this message. He said whoever, I must be senile because I forget who had the seat. He said, you won't be in that seat tomorrow. And he goes, whatever you talk, which, which one of y'all had Juanas Davis? Uh, tell me, what's one? Oh, that's what he is, if I don't know, he told me to remember the message, but she ain't here anyway. He said, you know, I mean, he coming back here to do some damage like, like Donald Trump. Where you going from now? I'm gonna tell, listen, you gotta be, you gotta be looking at the fuck when they talking to you. Talking about going in the bathroom about damages. You trying to do damages now? I mean, can you call her name, man? I'm gonna get senile as I talk as a senior citizen. I mean, but anyway, I feel pretty good because I ate that breakfast this morning, but now I'm feeling the bad of this Juanas Davis eating one of the corner. Take everybody out of prison and give them all job and try to keep people from throwing away thirty million dollars down the drain. He told me, said, everybody ask one of y'all, I'm still living this message, this little fellow walking. I didn't know where you was, I thought it was a skinhead, y'all muscle and bald headed, black skinny, he was a tattooed on, but then I found, I said, man, he said, yeah, tell him. And I went, anyway, Councilor Murphy, you better deal with that, the team champion. Then one of y'all speak up for themselves and you know this, and something in a breath.
The next speaker is John McDenn.
Evening, council. I would like to thank everybody that came out and just see what we're talking about down there, those party. But today, I'm not down here to talk about folk party. I'm here to talk about a lot of guys asking that you showed us and now you want, it looks like a coup d'etat. We got a council member talking about coffee, somebody coming up here talking about twenty-five thousand dollars they want to give. Looked like a coup d'etat. And then on top of that, we had five other councilmen, four other councilmembers, the photo man. There was, there was irrational thinking right there. We need councilmen down here that's up and thinking logically to get somebody twenty-five thousand dollars. The, the black flowers is ridiculous. Trees, whatever it was, but we got the citizens down here in this city that need that type of money. Twenty-five thousand dollars will go a long way? And y'all just want to give it away? That's ridiculous. The second thing I like to talk about, the allegations about money, I can make an investigation on that. They need to be a complete investigation. Twenty thousand dollars is a lot of money. Y'all decide to carry the second, this came on this, that's this, I can't make an investigation on that. The other thing I want to understand is that the people that took any type of curtailties, money, anything from any of these contractors out here, they should not, they haven't been able to phone. Hey. They said that's why they redeemed themselves from voting on that.
That's right.
Because it don't look like a Catholic official, because the phone and stuff like that, they look like a Catholic official. Hey. And this office right here is not showing no type of charity. I'm not saying that, but you know what I'm talking about. Murphy. Yeah. Councilman Murphy. Thank you.
The next speaker is Sherri Smith.
Hello, everybody. Sherri Smith. And I want to thank Mr. The First Chair, I mean, the First Award for coming out with the seniors today, because I've seen nobody else, but I really do appreciate that. Like I told you, I like to give my time back. It ain't about a paycheck, it's about giving back sometimes. Let that be the reason. Also, I want to say to everybody that you come out to Crossroads Village, they hope the seniors today, that everybody is, that they had a successful day. Second thing I want to speak about, when I sit out there, I just start to come, when I sit out there, I have nobody to hook up to but a couple people up here, that's pathetic. Just being honest, because all I see are you always going back and forth, back and forth, back and forth. You not know how, that, I was impeded by women last week that showed me what, what being a woman is all about. Just being honest with y'all, I was embraced by some real women over there in the group that showed me what looking up to a woman should be all about. Because when y'all get up here, y'all get this back and forth, back and forth, back and forth, that's not showing, none of these young people out here what it should be like to be sitting on that council. And whatever y'all got going on, when we come here, like I tell everybody, whatever happened yesterday, that's my yesterday, we gonna talk about what's going on today. Believe yesterday, yesterday, please. Because y'all ain't showing our young people nothing to look up to, and I'm just being honest. Is this what y'all really want to deflect out there to do? Our world, I'm proud of our young people. They sit back and they look at all this and that, you think they want to grow up to be like you? Think about it. Just being so serious with yourself, I could be a little bit more humble, not to forgive, but forgive. And remember, prayer is always good, not to worry about faith, you'll be all right. Thank you. Thank you.
A.C. Dumas.
My name is A.C. Dumas. First of all, about the hour for funds, especially two four zero one six nine, that two billion dollars, you know, that shortfall, trash contract, even local on that. Also, on the agenda, to really cut the finance agenda, now I don't see how they anything on the finance agenda. But what I do say, say that it takes six votes to go into full session. Unless y'all going to change it now. For fifty years, it took six votes, but some of this crowd, they like to make moves up as you vote. So it takes six votes. And also, I encourage you to vote no on consent or that's one one five and one four four. Vote no. And finally, I want to say, it may not be finally, but I've got a call from a few black contractors. And about two four oh one eight seven. And their businesses have that registered with the City of Flint. And when this contract for KMI road maintenance to do the sidewalks around the City of Flint, you don't need a bomb or any of that, they were never those easy. They weren't even contacted. And I told them to call Ed Taylor, call whoever, Black Arrow Brown, and ask them the questions. And those are questions that you all should ask. And lastly, but not least, you know, to give the money to a county board, don't do that. You know what that is? That ain't nothing but those who want to be elected or under recall, want to show the residents what they doing. It's faith. And I know faith. I'm a senior, but I'm not senile. And my last thing, that Mark Quinbleo at the Capitol, he will be a guest on my show live, WFLT fourteen twenty at nine thirty. You can also follow me on Facebook. And we're going to see what he has to say. Again, I support saving the historical, open park, thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ron Wall, one of the candidates of every day in G B. Ron is president. I believe he left after. Next speaker is Jan Marie Arber.
Good evening, council. Jan Marie Arber, seventh ward council candidate. First of all, I'd like to welcome Mr. Piperback, really missed your presence, just so that you know. Next, I would like to congratulate the ninth ward councilman who's been elected to that seat, Mr. Jonathan Jared. It's marvelous to see you in that seat, knowing about your character, your honesty, your integrity, your intelligence. I know beyond a shadow of a doubt that you're going to contribute great things to this council and to the city. And we are fortunate to have a man such as yourself represent your ward and the City of Flint. Thank you for taking up the challenge to represent that ward. It's been a long week of good effort. At this time, I would like to speak with regard to special order two four zero one nine three. In agreement with Mr. A.C. Dumas, I would ask that this council body not consider spending any of the thirty thousand dollars that each of you will have prior to the elections. I do not believe that it is fair nor a good look for persons who are running for office or who may be recalled and being challenged by another person to spend that money before the end of the year. It appears as though the money will be used for campaigning. And that's not a good look. That would be used against you during election time. So I ask that you please reconsider that and wait until after the elections so that whomever is elected or remains in their seat has ample opportunity between either August and December or November and December to spend that money. Thank you. The last item has to do with resolution number two four zero one nine one. As it relates to disorderly conduct, et cetera, point A dot five, or parentheses five. As it regards the conduct of the public body at an open meeting attended by the general public, any conduct or communication that inflicts injury. How is one to interpret that? Who defines what infliction is? If one is just generally sensitive, then their feelings are just going to be hurt. But anybody could claim that without actually being injured. So it's totally subjective, it's not objective. Likewise, point seven, repeated nonverbal conduct. What does that include? Does that include holding up signs or wearing T-shirts? Please be specific. I object to both of those points. Thank you.
Jan Marie, seventh ward. The next speaker is Alon Terry.
My name is Alon Terry. The two people I really want to speak to is not here, but I know they probably watching, somebody will go back and relate to them. So for, for a ward council person, so I got the train, my child, I just go ahead and my child is very well trained.
That's right.
She was the regular person that was up here speaking that said two, three, four, seven needs to be recalled or something. And all she said was add or one. So first of all, there is no liar there, she's very well trained to pull out the cushions. And to the second ward council person that's not here, that always going to talk about argument, they're arguing, she was arguing with me. So am I allowed to fuck police to take her out? Because all I said was that's a minor, talk to me. Then I said she's only twelve, talk to me, and she kept on. So that time I went out to the police and scored her out. And then they don't get to push you through, because we are all one. And last week, you were talking to her about how to respect women. And that's a man, I thought you at least would have stood up and told her better for a child, you have to speak to her mother, and you did. So I don't understand, when you were talking to her about men, what men should do, you got it all wrong too, buddy.
Your next speaker is Jared.
Good evening. My name is Allison, my name is Little John. I first wanted to make a correction from the last city council meeting that I attended. I mistakenly said in regards to the water lanes that one of my clients owes over forty-five thousand dollars, that's incorrect, it's over forty-five hundred dollars. So I just wanted to make sure I made that correction. So I am here regarding the high water rates in the City of Flint. And I came across an old ABC twelve news article that was originally written in two thousand twenty-one. There was a total of one hundred thirty-three businesses that owe almost a half million dollars in unpaid water bills to the City of Flint. Some of these businesses included condemned apartment complexes that have not paid their water bills since two thousand nineteen. In this same article, it was reported that Mary Lee stated that Flint residents' water bills will go up to help cover the difference because those businesses have been delinquent. I would like to know if this stipulation is still true today in two thousand twenty-four. To the city council and Flint administration, what is the current status of delinquent water bills that businesses are responsible for? For these business owners, what is their penalty? Will they face tax liens against their businesses as the residents have had to face tax liens against their homes? Jeff Wright, the Genesee County Drain Commissioner and CEO of the Correg Nadi Water Authority, the KWA, said in a Detroit News article dated two thousand sixteen that the construction of the KWA pipeline will bring fair water rates to the City of Flint residents, and this has yet to happen. What is the city council doing as a collective to make sure that City of Flint is receiving fair water rates? Thank you.
The next speaker is Miss Lee Taylor.
I see that the journalist here tonight, that's interesting. So I'm going to introduce a film that's on Netflix right now that talks about police. It's called Power. And one of the things they say in there is that the police can legitimize violence. And I think we legitimize violence at city hall council meetings by the council. And I think we ought to look at that film and see if we can make some serious changes. The other thing on the ordinance, if you don't like me at the council, you can just talk over my voice and talk over me as you relate to conduct and communication because this council has multiple members that want to fight with their fists and the police refuses to remove them. And so I asked multiple times, do the police belong to the community or does the police belong to the city council? It's a very important question, I think we ought to ask. The last service lines that you nearly signed up here has lots, lots of, lots of information. So why can't we put that much information to the community versus, as we asked through Mr. Flint and one of our shareholders, sixteen million dollars for our money to help the community? But no, we want to tell residents that it's your violation, you're wrong, and what we can do to you, and how we can hurt you, but we aren't talking about how we can help the community. That's the thing I think council really is lacking. And where exactly are we going to do about this water? And the City of Flint is ten years old that we still can't drink, that we still pay for, and an exorbitant amount of money. So I think you need to have a public hearing also about any ordinance that you change, that you want to change, that you change every day and week we come up here. I think we ought to cover this. What do we think about if you don't like me? And how do you report out to your ward in certain neighborhoods? Seven is what I'm speaking of, is different. My part is the part that the McFadden's talking about. Seventh ward council only wants to talk about peers' part. What is that but separating the community? We've got to realize that all parts belong to all of us. A council person does another part, a neighborhood does another part.
And I want to say that we as a community is here to help do whatever we can do to help expedite that. Because again, the monies must be allocated by December 31st, even though you put all of your general funds and still designated for Aqua. And we don't want to pass up this historic opportunity. And I'm anxious to put that motion on the floor so we can see how y'all vote. Just put the motion on the floor. And then once you put the motion on the floor, you don't have to send it to Habitat. You don't have to send it to the DCCA. You can do that. The city can be the beneficiary to get these roofs and things fixed. The city, we can do that. Even if you hire a crew temporarily to help dispose of these applications. Why are you going to send them here and there and they get 10% off the top? That don't make no sense. We get pipes, we can do roofs. All right. And then, last but not least, was on the agenda Monday, you got a communication from the Genesee, from the received April 30th, 2024, listing of 2024 property tax foreclosure to Genesee County, a memo regarding the local unit's right to purchase property prior to auction as mail to local unit clerk. And we had asked the attorney to look into the 190 properties. Was that communication sent to our city? We have not got an answer. But then you rush money over there to legal services to help represent these people that's being evicted by this out-of-state company. And all the legal services can do is make sure their rights is not violated. They might struggle for this proposal. So we want an answer about those 190 properties. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ms. Lee Taylor. The next speaker is Claire Littlejohn.
I'm going to rush these three minutes. It's such a short time and so many things going on. We want to save the historical part. We standing on that. We're not backing down from that. We will not back down from that. We also, usually I come up here and demand the $16 million in Aqua Funds for additional rehab and rehabilitation. We're not going back down from that either. And we hearing some signs and maybe some movement in that area. And I want to say that we as a community is here to help do whatever we can do to help expedite that. Because again, the monies must be allocated by December 31st, even though you put all of your general funds and still designated for Aqua. And we don't want to pass up this historic opportunity. And I'm anxious to put that motion on the floor so we can see how y'all vote. Just put the motion on the floor. And then once you put the motion on the floor, you don't have to send it to Habitat. You don't have to send it to the DCCA. You can do that. The city can be the beneficiary to get these roofs and things fixed. The city, we can do that. Even if you hire a crew temporarily to help dispose of these applications. Why are you going to send them here and there and they get 10% off the top? That don't make no sense. We get pipes, we can do roofs. All right. And then, last but not least, was on the agenda Monday, you got a communication from the Genesee, from the received April 30th, 2024, listing of 2024 property tax foreclosure to Genesee County, a memo regarding the local unit's right to purchase property prior to auction as mail to local unit clerk. And we had asked the attorney to look into the 190 properties. Was that communication sent to our city? We have not got an answer. But then you rush money over there to legal services to help represent these people that's being evicted by this out-of-state company. And all the legal services can do is make sure their rights is not violated. They might struggle for this proposal. So we want an answer about those 190 properties. Thank you.
Thank you. The next speaker is Ms. Lee Taylor. The next speaker is Claire Littlejohn. The next speaker is Claire Littlejohn.
All right, thank you.
Is there anyone who wishes to respond at this time? Do you have a council response?
The Chair.
Councilwoman in the sixth ward, you have the floor.
Thank you. I want to thank everyone for coming this evening. This is your council chamber. In regards to, you know I support Mr. Littlejohn's part, even in the rain, we cannot remove or move a historical site to new ground. The ground is what makes it historical, period. I want to speak to 240191. I would not be supporting that. One, I've seen too many times that the police have been weaponized against the residents. Too much of this ordinance is ambiguous and is left up to the interpretation of the chair, and I have a problem with that. The $16 million, Ms. Littlejohn, I did ask to have a resolution sent forward, let them vote it up, vote it down for the all pairs for our. They put on, put $5 million before, they voted down. Let the residents see where they stand. Of $2 million in the trash fees, I do not support that at all. I'm not at all. It's a low-end contract by our city charter that states we are supposed to send that out to bid. We should have had a, the company should have bid it out. We should not be balancing with Aqua Funds, which means we can't afford to pay for it. And then we have to figure out some balance to live for two years. Then we have to figure out how to pay for the next five years. We don't know. We don't know. So it's enough of the smoke and mirrors. Residents definitely deserve better. That contract was $9 million over the bid price. Mayor Leel told Mike Brown to take the other contract and shred. It's on record. It's on record. I would not be supporting this trash of $2 million. It should be put out to bid. Perfect, like city charter. That's the proper way to do it. Now, the Chair, I can be at this speaker. I think we want to have a conference. I will be leaving if you ask me. Well, if you give it to the city clerk, then I will be leaving shortly.
Thank you. Councilwoman, is there anyone else who would like to respond to the public at this time?
Yes. So I would like to thank all of the public for speaking. And I also want to congratulate Jonathan, Chair. This is our first meeting with you being elected councilman for the night. I look forward to working with you. And I also want to give a congratulations to Good Church on the 18th. They did a pretty grand opening of their laundry mat on Holbrook Street. I was there for that. It was nice to see a laundry mat in a accomplished neighborhood, and it looked really nice. So I was glad to be there on the 18th. And then on the 19th, they also had, where they had talked about 100 volunteers that went out and did projects around Holbrook, Austin, and Alma Street. They did a lot of different projects. So I just want to congratulate them. And this is their third year doing this and for them to keep up the good work. On the Aqua War priorities, we not getting to what democracy look like when it comes down to whether people get recalled or not. We allocated funding for war priorities. We done had time on meetings in the third war. We know what we want. We want to move forward on that. I know in Dewey Park, they need new basketball courts and asphalt because the basketball court is breaking up. And in Rolandwood Park, they need a pool court. So we got some priorities, and I'm not going to get into the politics or what people think. We need to, as a council, come and I guess present what our war priorities.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at this time? Do you have a response, Councilman? The ninth ward, you have the floor.
Thank you. First want to say thank you to all those that came out this evening or are here, those that are listening and feeling online and will take care of it in some way directly or indirectly with this meeting. Want to say to Ms. Littlejohn, thank you for being the type of person that will come back to correct a mistake that those bring deals integrity to. And I'm sorry for that. I look to, when you spoke, ma'am of the example, be the example. I see you, Ms. Littlejohn, as an example and someone that I will do the best that I know to take a mindful approach to show that same type of integrity. To, also to those water rates, that's something that I am looking forward to, just really trying to get my arms around how and why. When I look at my deal every month, and it's just my wife and I in the house, and $60 of it is just service charge. I really want to get my arms around what that means and what that is to cover. But it is a point. I've had calls on that type of issue even, you know, before tonight, which again is my first actual, actual meeting. That said, I guess I will end by saying I look forward to this evening, what it will hold, what we will be able to do in support of you, our constituents. So thank you.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak at this house? Councilwoman, you have the floor.
Like my colleagues said, thanks to everyone who came out tonight. In regards to Ms. Taylor mentioning trying to normalize violence, if councilmembers fought for the public as much as they fought each other, we would be in a hell of a position. Mr. Dumas, I too will not be supporting the $2 million, or if I didn't support the new contract contract, and I certainly won't support this bailout because that's what it is. There was other vendors that were cheaper. Not only did we select the most expensive vendor, we doubled down on it and gave him a 10-year contract with the home room. So I will not be supporting that either. I was going to leave after public comments, but I think I'm going to stay to make sure that I can get some separation on the consent agenda. Very proud, very proud parents of my son will be graduating with honors tonight. So I would be happy. I may leave as soon as we vote on the consent agenda to attend that. So once again, thanks for coming out, and I wanted to make sure I got here and heard from the residents before I had to leave. So that's why I'm here tonight. Thank you.
The next speaker is the third ward, Councilwoman, you have the floor.
Chair, I'd just like to say thank you to the audience as well. Everyone who spoke today, we appreciate you coming out, taking time, speaking in regards to issues and concerns that you have to thank.
Thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during policy at this time?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman, the second ward, you have the floor.
So to the President and the Ray had this letting of our working on more resources to stick here. So there's one that you know about. Thank you.
All right, thank you. I believe that everyone has had their opportunity to speak. So my council response. We will now move on to the consent agenda. I will, she said, the consent agenda. Councilwoman in the sixth ward.
I just want to say I will be leaving the meeting. I actually got a child whose honors and they're graduating. So we're done. I'll come back. Thank you.
There's a motion on the floor to send the consent agenda to council. Is there support?
Support.
Is the movement about support or are there separation? All right, roll call.
240115. 240144. 240169. I want to separate 240185. I'm sure the second part is a closed session. 240207.
All right, is there any other separations?
Madam Chair.
Councilman in the ninth ward.
I'd like to separate 240189.
All right, is there any separation?
And 240187. And...
Is there anyone else who would like to do the separation at this time? All right, seeing as how there are no more separations, the consent agenda will consist of Resolution 240183, which is the acceptance of its dismantle township, multi-jurisdictional Edward Burn Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, also known as JAG, Department of Justice. 240184, which is the same exact grant. And 240186, which is the Flint New Highland Cover Tractor, Flauto, Lock Hole, Light Department, John Deere Lawnmower, Fighter Department, Liberty Down Trailer Water Service Center. And then also 240188, which is the Amex Networking Google Workspace Enterprise Software, Laurel, Madden, and Flipper. Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Tracy, is there? Can we carry her in here? First, is that in? Is that it? Yes. Mr. Harper?
Yes.
Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
The vote is six yes and zero no. The consent agenda has been discussed. Moving on to Resolution 240115, which is consent to, if we have stipulation or this concerned access for social action at all versus City of Flint at all. The person who would be separating this as the left shows their motion on the floor concerning this.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman in the second ward.
There's a motion on the floor to send Resolution 240115 to special affairs. Is there support?
I support.
Simply the property supported by the councilmen in the first ward, is there discussion? Any discussion in the first? All right, seeing as there's no discussion from my colleagues in the first round, I would like to simply ask why are we putting this to special affairs? I mean, I can't say request for information is not, I guess request for information is not here. Why are we putting this to special affairs?
I can't hear.
You can't hear.
Yeah, so we can, we're trying to lay it on, but we have a baseball.
Is there someone who can legally speak to it right now?
Can't understand back here what was said, so they probably don't know what I'm talking about.
Stop yelling out. Is there someone who can speak to, legally speak to, because this isn't on the case here? Is there someone who can speak to this? I believe we have to refer to the city town attorney because we are only in the first round of discussion. We'll move to the second round of discussion. I'm hoping whatever questions that they have, they do ask.
The way I can give you, the first is that this matter was discussed on the executive session back on March 20th. I was not present for that session, but I believe and I'm hopeful that councilpersons here work. This is an ongoing litigation involving the city, and that is all of the news.
I think that's all of the news that we need to say. So there's nothing else in the first round, second round, anyone who wishes to speak this council in the first round?
I would like to make a motion to keep this in finance.
There's a motion on the floor to keep Resolution 240115 in finance. Is there support? Or simply moving the property to support by the councilwoman in the second ward?
The reason why I want to keep this in finance.
Yes. Yes. I'm sorry. I know we won't be discussing more after another motion, so yeah, it's fine. Roll call. You have the floor.
Okay.
Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Yes. Yes. Yes.
And...
Is there anyone else who would like to do the separation at this time? All right, seeing as how there are no more separations, the consent agenda will consist of resolution two four zero one eight three, which is the acceptance of its dismantle township, multi-jurisdictional Edward Burn Memorial Justice Assistance Grant, also known as J. Department of Justice. Uh, two four zero one eight four, which is the same exact grant. Uh, and two four zero one eight six, which is the Flint New Highland Cover Tractor, Colorado, Mark Hoare Light Department, John Deere Lawnmower, Fighter Department, Liberty Down Trailer Water Service Center. And then also two four zero one eight eight, which is the Amex Networking Google Workspace Enterprise Software, Laurel, Paul, Adam, and Flipper. Ms. Lewis.
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Tracy, is there? Mr. Parker, is that it? First, is that it? Yes. Mr. Parker? Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
The vote is six yes, the zero no, the consent agenda has been discussed. Uh, moving on to the resolution two four zero one one five, which is consent to entry of stipulation in notice concerning pastors for social action at all versus City of Flint at all. Uh, the person who would be separating this, uh, selects shows their motion on the floor concerning this.
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman, the second word.
Can I have a vote on the fourth, please, special affairs?
There's a motion on the floor to send, uh, resolution two four zero one one five to special affairs. Is there support?
I support.
It's been moved and properly supported by the councilwoman in the first ward. Is there discussion? Any discussion in the first? All right, seeing as there's no discussion for my colleagues in the first round, I would like to, um, simply ask why are we moving this to special affairs? I mean, I can't say request for information, I guess request for information is on here. Why, why are we moving this to special affairs?
Also, we can, we're going to do it, um...
Can't hear.
Can't hear.
Yeah, so we can, um, we're going to do it on, um, we have a baseball.
Is there someone who can legally speak to it right now?
Can't understand back here what, what was said, so they probably don't know what I'm talking about.
Um, stop yelling out. Is there someone who can speak to, legally speak to, because this isn't on the bill here? Um, is there someone who can speak to this? I believe we have to refer to the city town attorney. Uh, because we are only in the first round of discussion. When we move to the second round of discussion, I'm hoping whatever questions that they have, they do ask.
Do I kind of like to give you, the counsel person, that this, this matter was discussed on the executive session back on March twenty? I was not present for that session, but I believe and I'm hopeful that councilperson's here will work. This is an ongoing litigation involving the city, and that is all I believe you said.
I think that's all any more needs, that's all we need to say. So, um, there's nothing else in the first round, um, second round? Anyone who wishes to speak to council in the first round?
I would like to make the motion to keep this in finance.
There's a made motion on the floor to keep resolution two four zero one one five in finance. Is there support or support? It's been moved and properly supported by the councilwoman in the second ward. Go ahead.
The reason why I want to keep this in finance, just in all...
Yes, yes, I'm sorry. I know we won't be discussing more after another motion, so yeah, it's fine. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Allen, the chair? Yes. Parker, the clerk? Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes. Yes.
The vote is five yes, zero no. Resolution two four zero one one five, consent to entry of stipulation in notice concerning pastors for social action at all versus City of Flint at all. States in finance. Moving on to resolution two four zero one four four, which is administrative consent orders, City of Flint, State of Michigan, Department of Environment, Great Lakes and Energy, also known as Eagle Drinking Water Environmental Health Division. Is there a motion on the floor?
Yes.
Councilwoman, Murphy.
I would like to make a motion to keep two four zero one four four in finance.
There's a motion on the floor to keep two four zero one four four in finance. Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and properly supported by the councilwoman in the first ward. Is there discussion?
Yes.
Councilwoman, Murphy.
The reason why I can't believe to keep this in finance is to make, um, councilman, um, Garrett, time to, um, educate himself and, um, learn more and familiarize himself with what's going on for this. And I think, um, right now, that's finance, and I think we have enough time to be able to do this, basically.
All right, thank you. Uh, is there anyone else who would like to floor a brief discussion at this time? In the first round? Anybody else in the first round? Seeing as how there's no, is there anyone in the second round? Is there anyone in the second round? Seeing as how there's no discussion for the second round, roll call, Madam Clerk. Mr. Precious, is that it? Mr. Parker, is that it? This is the chair? Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Mr. Parker, the clerk? The chair?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
The vote is five yes, zero no. Resolution two four zero one four four, which is the administrative consent order, City of Flint, State of Michigan, Department of Environmental, Great Lakes and Energy, also known as Eagle Drinking Water Environmental Health Division, states in finance. Moving to resolution two four zero one six nine, which is the reallocation of ARBA funds paid for uncollected trash fees. Is there a motion? Councilwoman, Murphy.
Yes, I would like to, um, leave, um, resolution two four zero one six nine, reallocation of ARBA funds, payments of uncollected trash fees in finance.
There's a motion to leave resolution two four zero one six nine in finance. Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and properly supported by the councilperson in the first ward. Is discussion. Councilwoman, Murphy.
This, this, this trash fees is very complicated issue that, um, I think we need to have a little bit more discussion with why the two million, um, versus us not doing anything and possibly having, um, increased, um, special effect, setting on trash because our collectibles, far as what we collected, far as taxes, is not enough to cover, um, the shortfall in the trash. So, that's why the two million was allocated of ARBA funds to cover for the next two years. And I think it's important, again, for our company in the board, and also our company beyond, I'm, I'm not sure how familiar you are, but I think it's important that we have another discussion about this trash before, um...
All righty. Is there anyone else who would like to have a discussion at this time?
Madam Chair.
Councilman, the ninth word, you have the floor.
Um, I think to keep it in finance, we are in finance, and we can maybe have some of that discussion now would be helpful to me. So, if there is some additional conversation that we can have, if we can go ahead and have that now.
Anybody else in the first round? Anybody else in the first round? All right, seeing as how there's no one else in the first round, would anyone like to floor the second round discussion? Councilwoman, Murphy, you have the floor.
To finance, I reckon, could you come?
Um, Mr. Moore, would you please join us at the late time? Can we, can we?
Yes, uh, Mr. Moore, could you explain as much as possible why the two million of ARBA dollars is being requested to pay for the trash, uncollected trash?
The million, uh, special assessment we have for, uh, trash right now is not supporting the funds sufficiently. If we, uh, so the choice is really to eat it, transfer the funds from ARBA, or we have to raise the, uh, these for the special assessment.
Through you to Mr. Moore, um, do you know what's the objective shortfall in, in collectibles and the trash?
The, uh, two million dollars to take care of, uh, this year and the next year, we're probably going to pay a million dollars each year.
And is, is this due to, um, people not paying and property justice? Or is it due to, we just don't have enough in that? And then what we, um, collecting in taxes when it comes down to the special assessment of trash? So, if we do the two million, will we turn around and have to enter something else out after we do the two million because we still not collecting? Because it's only going to pay for two years and then we going to be back in this debt afterwards?
That's correct. Two years, we'll have to, uh, revisit the issue. But decide when we're here.
If we don't do anything, so say we don't use the two million, what happens then?
We don't use the two million, they were, we'll have to raise the special assessment.
All right, thank you very much, but that's all.
Thank you. Um, Mr. Moore, could you please stay up here, my colleague in the ninth word, he has a question.
Uh, Chair to CFO. So, if we're one million this year, one million next year, why are we asking for two years?
Why are we going for two years?
Why are we going for two million if it's a million shortfall and then another million in another year?
Right, so, uh, we need a million for current fiscal year.
Right.
Then we'll need a million for next fiscal year.
Right.
Otherwise, we're, uh, we're going to have to raise the race, uh, when we improve the budget.
So, why are we doing two million now instead of just one million? And then we take this time to, you are, you know, the administration take the next nine months to come up with a solution? Because it's either come up with a solution in nine months or come up with a solution in twenty-one months?
I, I guess that the point of decision by the city council, uh, our information should take care of it once and for all, uh, with a million dollar passion. But if you want to do a million this year, then you can trust this for later next year. That's possible.
Okay, so, what does the analysis look like? And if, what does the analysis look like per household for this million dollars?
It's approximately forty dollars a year per household.
Forty dollars a year?
Yes, sir.
Per household?
Correct.
Versus taking two million from ARBA that we can potentially do something?
That's correct.
Forty dollars per household?
Correct.
Okay.
For, for this fiscal year, if you, you have, don't have many options. We can't set up, uh, special assessment versus for the current fiscal year.
Okay, but if we were to amend the request to a million dollars, then there's time to collect forty dollars where we would have a million dollars getting ARBA funds to do something different with?
That's correct.
Huh? That's not the option. Okay.
Thank you.
Uh, uh, council. Just to make sure I heard correctly, um, after the two years, this safe women's ration, uh, supporting this, I'm sorry, I don't remember. I just want to make sure I heard clearly, um, after the two years, this safe women's ration, uh, supporting this, has there been, is there planning plates or is there tons?
Uh, there's no plan of this, what happens after, to, after the events fiscal year. So, at that month, we'll have to revisit the issue beside one more to...
Mr. Moore, um, in response to an announcement we're trying to, this kind of figure out different ways that we can help avoid raising taxes for residents. So, what happens now is, is we only give a million dollars. When we give you all, people in stretch diamonds to come up with another plan and you do not, that means taxes will go up for residents, correct?
That's correct.
Okay, thank you. Yeah, I, I don't know if you want the floor, I'm sorry.
Oh, no, this, I know you're the last one to speak.
I am the last one. This is the second round. All right, uh, roll call, Madam Clerk. And this is for leaving the resolution two four zero one six nine, the allocation of ARBA funds, payment of uncollected trash fees in, um, finance. Mr. Allen, is that it? Mr. Allen? Yes. Mr. Parker, the clerk? Mr. Garrett?
Yes.
Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Yes.
The vote is five yes, zero no. Resolution two four zero one six nine, reallocation of ARBA funds, payment of uncollected trash fees, stays in finance. Moving to resolution two four zero one eight five seven, um, of the jail versus City of Flint, ED Mike Michigan case number two four, Z, two four dash one zero two five six. Is there a resolution?
Yes.
Councilwoman, Murphy.
I would like to move this to council.
There is a, uh, motion to move this resolution to council. Is, is, is there support? It's been moved and properly supported by the councilwoman in the second ward. Is there any discussion?
Yes.
Councilwoman, Murphy, you have the floor.
settlement that we talked about in the executive, um, session. Twelve thousand five hundred dollars, I think, we need to go on this floor.
Is there anyone? Okay, is there anyone else who would like to have discussion at this time? Anybody else in the first round? And seeing as how there's no one else in the first round, we will move to the second round. Is there anyone at the second round?
Um, yes.
Councilwoman, Murphy.
Um, I think, well, some of these, um, cases, um, we had six votes, we also take a session. What is happening is, thinking that's over five thousand dollars that we have to go on executive session for such a distance of twelve thousand five hundred dollars, we go into executive session, we talk a lot, and then we bring it back to the floor to move the council to lower funding. And this is just one of those cases where we're in our room, it's an executive session, we must just add. So, that's it, thank you.
All right, thank you. Anyone else who would like to come to the second round? Anybody else? Seeing as how there's no one else who would like to come to the second round, roll call, Madam Clerk. And this is to send two four zero one eight five seven, from the jail versus City of Flint, ED Michigan case number two four dash one zero two five six to council. Mr. Allen? Yes. Mr. Parker, is that it? Mr. Garrett?
Hey, man, what? Oh, yes. Man, we're thinking. Oh.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Murphy?
Yes.
Vote is five yes, zero no. Vote is five yes, zero no. Uh, resolution two four zero one eight five, the settlement from the jail versus City of Flint, ED Michigan case number two four zero, excuse me, two four dash one zero two five six has been moved to official. Now, we move on to resolution two four zero one eight seven, which is the contract KMI Romanis replacement of city hall sidewalks. Um, is there a resolution? Excuse me, is there a motion?
Yes.
Councilwoman, Murphy.
I would like to move this resolution to special affairs.
There's a motion on the floor to move this resolution to special affairs. Is there support? Is there support? That motion fails due to lack of support. Is there another motion for resolution two four zero one eight seven?
Madam Chair.
Councilwoman, in the second ward.
If you'd like to close that, um, resolution, um...
There is a, um, motion on the floor to move two four zero one eight seven to council. Is there support?
Support.
It's been moved and properly supported by the councilman in the third ward. Is there discussion?
Yes.
Councilman in the third ward, you have the floor.
So, um, is there someone that should be at council meeting, um, through you to, um, someone in the back? Is there anyone that can speak for this hundred and twenty thousand, um...
Uh, Mr. Moore, would you please join us at the last round?
Sidewalks for around the city hall. What, what does it look like and why? Where, where, where we try to replace sidewalks at?
The sidewalks are less than ones behind city hall. And the reason is because they're very broken up and has two tripping hazards and, uh, to heat, fix it, so we're less than a lot of going in.
You said something about, I cannot hear you, you said something about federal or what?
No, no, they're both not present. It's a tripping hazard and, uh, the sidewalks are broken up in E. We want to, uh, make it safer, necessary to use. And, uh, it's just kind of their replacement, they've been there for a long time.
So, what sidewalks will be given replaced?
The ones beside, behind city hall, including the area that goes down into the, I don't know what you call that, uh, hollow out or anything, that would be also be replaced. Uh, there's a lot of sidewalk in there that needs to be replaced.
Oh, oh, okay, thank you.
Thank you. Uh, councilman, the ninth word, you have the floor.
So, um, I see that we have the three bids. So, did, did this actually go out as, uh, our theory imposed it or?
Uh, yes, sir, we have, uh, we have posted that it's available, there are a couple sites that we use for that. A lot of contractors around the state use that, um, system. And, um, we got prepared the bids, we picked the lowest bid.
Okay, is, is there a reason why we didn't take? Because this MDT construction looks like it was a little bit lower. I mean, fifty cent per square foot is fifty cent. So, when we're talking a hundred and twenty thousand dollars, I'm assuming there's a lot of square feet.
Um, I don't go to details for that, I'm sorry.
Okay, um, so, one of the questions I have, very similar, is a, uh, councilman in the, in the third ward there is, I know with our sidewalk repair program currently, for those that are going to be repaired under, say, the fifty-fifty program, there's a grading scale that they use to actually assess which ones they will contribute to. Is that same grading scale used in, in this application?
I, I don't know. Uh, I do know that they reviewed it and, uh, because of the port edition, which is the reason why it's considered to be replaced.
Well, let me, let me tell you why I, I, I ask that specifically. It's because in, in doing the, the sidewalk repair under fifty-fifty program, again, they give each, each square a grade. So, you actually can look like tic-tac-toe as to what they'll do versus clearing the entire, the entire driveway. Are we going to take the same care with our budget and making sure that we're spending on this sidewalk? Or are we clearing from A to Z and all after good in between?
I, I don't go to details of that.
Is it, is it fair to ask that question?
No, it's a, it's a question.
Okay, so, so is that a question I can trust that maybe you'll be able to answer? Or someone will be here to answer Monday?
Monday, so much, so much, uh, Tuesday, so much, so much, I'm not interested.
Okay, because I, I, I would think that when we're talking about tripping hazards, I, I can send pictures of draw, of sidewalks where the tree has uprooted the sidewalk such that you can see under the bottom side of the concrete. And that needs to be addressed as a tripping hazard as well.
I, yes, I agree.
Okay, so, come Monday, we will be able to get someone to speak to that? Um, and, or Tuesday, I, I think, Tuesday, we will be able to get someone to speak to that. Okay, um, and, and I'm, and they'll be able also to give some feasible explanation as to why we did use a higher bid?
Yes.
Oh, this is getting interesting.
Yes.
This is getting interesting.
Mr. Jared, I want to have you, just a similar question, um, I know we have a lot of issues, especially in the first ward, but in this, sidewalks are, so, do we have a, we start, one of the, it's our turn, and a lot of guys that side are, um, there. So where we're gonna start in the first question, anyway, do you have a, do you have a date on when they need to start from?
Uh, places are, no, I don't, we can get them to, I do there.
Are you done with stuff? Okay, so, Mr. Moore, we do understand that you are the finance guy and that these details are for, like, street maintenance and people who do this actual work. So we do expect to see someone who does the work and who can give timelines and has the actual plan laid out, uh, on Tuesday, so please let them know that this is their invitation to join us. We do thank you for your answers for all of our financial needs, though.
Okay.
We understand the operations part, not necessarily, thank you. Um, is there anyone else in the person, one more special, is there anyone in the second round? Anyone in the second round? Seeing as there's no one in the second round, um, Mattler, this is the, uh, roll call, it's two four zero one eight seven, contract KMI road maintenance replacement of city hall sidewalks to council. Mr. Hyde, first answer, Mr. Jacob?
Yes.
Mr. Alana?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Brown, Mr. Carson? Mr. Chad? Yes. Paulie, God, yes, you want to? The vote is five yes, zero no, Resolution two four zero one eight seven, contract KMI road maintenance replacement of city hall sidewalks has been sent to council. Moving on to Resolution two four zero one eight nine, which is the allocation of ARBA funds, small business grants, local initiative support corporation, also known as L I S, is there a motion?
I'm here.
Councilman in the second ward?
I will present the motion, sir.
There is a motion on the floor to send this resolution to council, is there support?
Support.
Has been moved and properly supported, I'll take the councilman in the first ward, thank you, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Councilman in the ninth ward, you have the floor?
If, uh, whoever from the administration could...
One second, yep, I got you. Is there someone who gives me to this resolution?
One information.
Uh, yes, sir.
M D War.
Thank you.
Sorry.
Um, Emily, would you please join us as a little extra?
This is gonna get real interesting.
Good evening, council.
Good evening.
So, um, this, this, uh, resolution, this subcontractor, this, this go off for any kind of R F P or more than?
Yeah, so, uh, in October of twenty twenty-two, uh, this body approved, uh, a budget for ARBA. And, um, that included a five hundred thousand dollar, uh, pot of funds that was supposed to be for small business grants, so that was in the budget that this body approved. Um, then, uh, between then, uh, between that point, and I think actually even before that point, uh, we had an economic development director named Calphani Stevens, and, uh, he had been trying to figure out, uh, who would be good partners, and I believe that during that time, he had actually talked to a number of the C D M I's, community development financial institutions that were in the city. Uh, we have, um, L I S, Metro Community Development, um, are the lead to a few of our banks, um, our B three banks have C D M I arms that are more community development focused, and they were, um, also part of the discussion. During that time, um, I think that there was, because of the early for leverage other funds, the decision to make that this would be the best partner. So then, I will just say that moving forward, that's where we came up with it, um, so it was, a lot of that work was done before I came here.
Okay, I'll, I'll sort of stop you there at the interest of time, because you said a key word to both myself and I believe the councilman in the, in the fourth ward, you can work leverage.
Yep.
So what leverage is for, or benefit in addition to this five hundred thousand, is this working?
Uh, so L I S has access to, there's over, um, so L I S is a national organization, uh, their, the organization's headquarters in New York, they have above fifty different, uh, branches around the country.
Yes.
Flint has its own office, and because of that, they have, um, I would say easily twenty-five million dollars of, of additional small business loans that they can do at, uh, one, we're talking zero percent, one percent interest rates. So, grant, uh, the grant program that we would want to run, the businesses could turn around and then, because they've already submitted all their information, they would turn around and get a loan.
So have they earmarked a dollar amount that they are committing to this program?
No.
Okay, that's...
Because all of the Flint, L I S dollars are, are earmarked for Flint companies.
Okay.
Yeah.
But, but to this program specifically, return on this five hundred thousand, is there, what commitment have they given to leverage for that specifically?
Um, well, so section four dollars is the other piece I wanted to mention that, um, they have, and they get around, uh, quarter of a million dollars in section four money, that is, um, additional grants for small scale developers here in Flint, and that is all earmarked for small scale development companies, whether, uh, if you're a non-profit, mostly non-profit, but also for private LLCs, some of whom I think will be coming to use the program as well, so.
Okay.
I guess, we have, we don't have a specific amount, we have a commitment to continue the, what they've already been doing and have more moving forward.
I'm, I'm, I'm gonna, at times, not necessarily mean to be disrespectful and cut you short, but in the interest of time and that, but, so a couple things I'm gonna want you to think about for the next round, one, is help me to understand a little bit better the scope of work, what L I S will actually do, and then give me a little bit more detail about this five hundred thousand. How much is allowable for administration? How much is gonna go for the trainers or whoever facilitates the instruction? And then how much, between the forty to fifty grantees, how much is designated of this five hundred thousand we will give in grants to these businesses? The other thing I wanna know, the other thing I wanna know is, the, this ecosystem, this ecosystem for businesses, is this developing new businesses or working with existing? And, and I'm really gonna wanna hear how, cause I've, I've worked alongside Tyler, and I know of his great work, why do we have to subcontract this versus using our staff and cut out the middleman?
Yes.
I love it. I think there's anyone else who could ask for a floor this round?
Mine's...
Councilman, you have the floor.
Uh, I, I was taking notes while I was speaking.
I'm happy to answer this question, yes.
Emily, uh, could you answer the question, uh, um, why not, um, in-house?
Good, so, so first of all, no more than ten percent will be used for admin, so four hundred and fifty thousand at least will be put out in grants, um, if not more, we are going to have to actually bill their time that they spend, uh, so four hundred and fifty thousand, if not more, uh, we're hoping less than ten percent will be used for admin. Uh, number two, uh, that's where the, um, forty to fifty companies come from, um, on average, we're expecting grants of, uh, between ten to twelve thousand dollars. Number three, these are existing companies, um, we want this program to focus on existing companies who were in existence prior to, to COVID. We want this program to actually be one of the COVID response programs that is part of this ARBA allocation that the city received, um, that was the intent of the funds, and so we are focusing on existing companies who were in, uh, operation prior to March twentieth, twenty, or March seventeenth, twenty twenty. Um, next, uh, we want to sub this out because again, we want the, uh, entities that are receiving the grants to get into a system where then they could access zero to one percent to two percent interest, uh, loans, that would give them more dollars to, um, be able to expand their companies here, which is something we want to do. Uh, we are always working with new companies, but, uh, new companies are not eligible for this specific grant program. And then, um, finally, uh, another reason to not do it in-house, um, and, and we say this, it is part of the, uh, program guidelines will be, uh, around underwriting, and the underwriting is going to be things like, uh, uh, what did your twenty, twenty nineteen dollars look like, or revenues and profits and, um, and costs, what did your twenty twenty, what did your twenty twenty-one, and taking the staff time to be able to actually underwrite what was their business trajectory, therefore being able to say that, that they were affected by COVID, um, and past muster for why they are getting a grant, we want that to be done in a more of a professional underwriting way, um, and none of my staff are trained underwriters, so. Hopefully, I can give you all those questions.
Also, um, how many businesses will be affected by this funding if we are more around this funding?
Um, yeah, so I think we said fifty, or forty to fifty, uh, because...
Forty to fifty companies?
Between forty to fifty, because the average grant size we're looking at is, would be around two thousand.
And they will be able to receive up to how much money?
Uh, the average grant will be about ten thousand dollars.
About ten thousand dollars?
Yep. Um, and they would have, again, have to have been in business, uh, in operations prior to, uh, the start of COVID, March seventeenth, twenty twenty. Um, and so, uh, again, this was part of the co, uh, council approved budget from the October twenty twenty-two, so we're just trying to follow that through, um, but, I'll stop, so I have more questions.
Okay, and then, this, this last question was not asked, he had a whole bunch, um, ecosystem, could you elaborate on that?
There is an entrepreneurial ecosystem, uh, which is a pluralized group of entities that help, uh, small businesses, so, uh, if you are listening in the audience, if you have a business idea, we want you to go start with a hundred K ideas, uh, they're based, they were at the Ferris wheel, they're down the drive-in, go there and start with your business, you can also go to U of M Flint, uh, and their, um, economic development office, and they will help you with a business plan, you can go to the, um, uh, startup assistance at Kettering University. So there's different entities to help with startups and, and kind of crystallizing your business concept, then there are mid-range, um, help that we are a part of, so zoning and finding the right building, um, and helping with that, there's also help that we can have for some of our, our existing businesses. So there's this whole ecosystem of, of entities that mostly non-profit, but some for-profit companies, best practice is consulting Laura Segman, that's one of them, she helps really hone, um, the business, um, marketing and, and kind of, um, she consults on who is your customer and how are you making money, and that's oftentimes not something a startup can answer, we have to have been in business, so, anyway.
I've got twenty-five seconds left.
Yep.
Well, we've been, um, with, on, on this resolution, uh, months. It's been a while, this has been on the agenda.
No, this is a new resolution, sir.
This is not?
This is not been on a resolution, uh, uh, definitely.
This is a new resolution?
That is correct.
Okay, all right, thank you.
Thank you, sir, and last, back to Florida. All right, seeing as there's no one else who would like to perform, first one off, we'll then take, um, my time. So, if we are hearing you correctly, this is, uh, followed from something that was , uh, in twenty twenty-two was supposed to do, right? So we're just now starting something that was approved back in twenty twenty-two, correct?
Technically, all ARBA things are part of a budget that was approved in twenty twenty-two.
Okay. But the leg was... Yes, yes, yes. Okay. Um, and then you said that there is a local office, where's that office located?
Uh, they are in the building on Court Street where the Girl Scouts are and the Ruth Mount Foundation, uh, next to, uh, the Marsh, uh, the, the art gallery, so they're on Court Street, just east of, uh, Second.
Correct, and if I hear, heard you correctly about why we are subcontracting as opposed to using our staff, the biggest thing that I heard was because we do not have any underwriters who are able to do this work. Okay, uh, and so once we do this, as we move forward, and we look forward to years from now, we are going to get qualified staff, I mean, in the sense of, cause I don't wanna be insulting to our staff, cause we have very qualified staff, they do, um, as in we're going to get people who can do underwriting for, at least let, go for some sort of underwriting training, is that eventually going to be a goal, or is it always just a contract out?
I don't know that in the future that we will be in the position financially to give grants through the city, this is a one-time opportunity, um, so I'm not sure in the future we'd use staff resources in that way.
No problem, and then the second reason why you said that it was being subbed out is the, for the percentage, explaining why, and I said, and I know you said it, but you said it really quickly, so, when we, when we asked, why does it have to be subbed out, you talked about the percentage that they would get from it being subbed out.
Oh, just that, so less than ten percent, so ten percent is the max, so they will spend less than ten percent, uh, so less than fifty thousand dollars to do this, so they will have to hire someone that does this, I'm imagining, with part of their time, um, so, but I'm hoping we're trying to make sure that they track their hours and have it be on hourly basis and have it be no more than a certain amount is spent, so if...
So when I'm, when I'm saying percentage, I was talking about, we were talking about the percentage of the businesses we get. Your interest, the interest rates, when you were talking about...
Oh, uh, the, so the businesses, if, if you go to L I S to get a business loan right now, because of the dollars that they hold, that they get, that L I S offices are putting up, they have small business loans at zero and one percent that you can get through L I S, um, and that you can't get if you go to a bank, banks are charging way more.
No problem, so it's more of an advantage for those who are trying to, um, uh, move the, be successful entrepreneurs, I should say, and not have to come out of a lot of money or not owe a lot of money and trying to build their work. Sounds good, uh, anybody in the second round?
Uh, yes.
Councilman in the ninth ward? Yes.
So thank you for, for fielding those questions and even answering, and not just addressing. Yeah, um, so, I, I just wanna make sure I'm, I'm understanding, so, L I S is only taking or using for their, uh, for them executing this, this program, fifty thousand dollars, so there are no other program fees that they're gonna be able for?
At most, we're hopeful we'll have even less, we're gonna do a max, but we're, we're gonna build it on an hourly basis.
So, so they'll bill us up to fifty thousand dollars, and all other four hundred fifty thousand will be available to these small businesses as grants?
Absolutely.
Okay, that, that, that makes difference for me, and I say that because, you know, and I'm, I'm glad you are here, because the page and a half of the summary, that didn't otherwise do it for you, uh, but understanding better now how it's gonna be used and some of the value that L I S is gonna bring, I was wondering, why not just reach out, you mentioned you of them and their program, you mentioned Metro, why not just have some of those other entities that are listed here that I was, I would have otherwise been hopeful that we were, again, bringing in those partners, because one thing you're gonna find for me is I'm gonna wanna hear about the holistic approach to problem solving, and trying to identify that we use as many partners as possible, so not to burden anyone, and also get as no deleverage of funds and resources. So, my, my question, my last question otherwise is, uh, in your role, when you look at this, how do you view the return on our five hundred thousand dollar investment? Is that gonna yield revenue for the city as you see it, or is it gonna, and I'm gonna use the word only, and I don't mean it in a derogatory way, but is it only gonna, uh, produce goodwill or, and hopefully not a political opportunity for someone?
No, I appreciate that, um, I think the best way to make sure that this genuinely helps our community, um, which we require, uh, brick and mortar companies to stay, our commercial corridors and our, our, our neighborhood centers are only able to thrive by having businesses that have brick and mortar locations, and so what I would like to see, um, as an additional overlay is that the companies who, um, benefit from this program, you have to have a brick and mortar location in the city, um, because we don't need more of these programs.
Thank you, is there anyone else in the second round? Councilman in the first ward?
Yes, I have two quick questions, um, with the emerging development, uh, program gonna be a part of this.
So it is a part of it in that it's part of our economic development strategy of using ARBA funds, which are one-time funds, to help propel things forward, and that it is going to be a partnership with L I S and to help leverage, but they are separate programs?
Separate.
Yeah.
Okay, my second question is, there any, um, locations on the north or east side where it's like, um, where you can do this, small businesses can go to get assistance and stuff, necessarily some, maybe downtown, or you would, and so forth, is any, okay, on the north side or the sides, the system, there's a note there?
All right, one of the things that we've talked about, uh, with both the emerging developers program and this, is that we want to see that the, uh, space time with small scale developers being small businesses, again, separate programs, but same concept, uh, is that we want to see them, um, those meetings and those trainings. is that we want to see them, um, those meetings and those trainings and those facilitations are happening. They can happen at the office here downtown, but we would like to see and will make sure that, again, part of List and their assurance to us, that they will happen out in the night. So, um, yes, we'll make sure.
Thank you, that's all right.
Thank you, is there anyone else who would like to perform the second one? Councilman in the first floor.
So, our little small businesses get into five real working businesses.
If this body occurs, this resolution, uh, tonight, and then again on Monday, uh, we'd be able to have them apply through List, uh, to be able, and the, the initial, um, uh, application would be, uh, I'm thinking one to two pages, if not going to be very burdensome. Um, but then that would help us, um, make sure that then who List is working with, to then underwrite, to make sure that we're getting the dollars out, um, would happen, um, in an equitable way.
So, yeah.
Is there anyone else who would like to perform the floor, the second one? Seeing as now there is no one else who would like to perform the second round, this is to send resolution two four zero one eight nine, the allocation of ARCA funds, small business grants, local initiative support, corporation also known as List, to, so, yeah, Paul Bader.
Yes.
So, um?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes.
Yes. The vote is five yes, zero no, resolution two four zero one eight nine, the allocation of ARCA funds, small business grants, local initiative support, corporation also known as List, cabinet and council, now to the on to resolution two three zero two zero seven, insurance, excuse me, issuance of bonds, sewage system, revenue bond system improvements and related cost standing and priority of outstanding bond retirement and security of bonds acceptance, grant authorization of a grievance, is there a motion? Councilwoman in the second floor. There is a motion on the floor, is there a support, is there support? It's been voted upon, support by the councilman in the third floor, is there any discussion?
Yes.
Councilman Murphy, you have the floor.
Uh, is there anyone to speak on this resolution? I know this is a continuation, uh, of approval, um, is there anyone in the back?
Councilman Murphy, I would like to remind you that you have to go through the chair.
Through the chair.
Thank you. I think, uh, Ms. Jeanette Beth is going to join us at her left turn.
Could you speak on this, um, I know, bond, I think this page is thirty, uh, some work we've been working on, you explain this more.
Yeah, third one.
Who is that? That's a bomb.
The bond is a fund in the, uh,
It's a whole new system, revenue bond system, approval check, everything across.
The bond is a fund, um,
Would you speak up as I'm, I can hear?
The bond is to fund part of a project we've been working on for several years. There was a project plan that was submitted in two thousand nineteen, was approved by the city council. We did phase one, which did six projects, we did phase two, that was another four projects. Um, we were awarded a grant and three more projects. And this particular project is to take care of a, a pump station that is no longer in use. Um, to upgrade our electrical distribution system for the entire, first of all, and all its disturbances. We would be replacing all the transformers, the transformers that are in place right now are vintage nineteen sixties, some of them are nineteen seventies, so they're really old and they're in, in, you know.
Um, how much funding is we looking to obtain to finish this phase two?
Well, the last phase of this is to actually rehabilitate the force main that comes from the third avenue pump station, which is right next to Kevin University. And that pump station was built in nineteen twenty-five. And transfers forty percent of the flow from, it's basically the center city, uh, wastewater all the way out to the wastewater plant, which is on the corner of London Beach Road. There are two force mains, and one that was built in nineteen twenty-four, twenty-five, when, when they were building the pump station. The other one was built when they expanded the wastewater plant in nineteen seventies. So these two pipelines have not been attended to. The oldest one a hundred years and the newest one in over fifty years. So, one of the things is inspect them, repair them, put in, uh, control valves so that you can isolate them, and put them in better shape, so that, uh, we don't have catastrophic failures. So the biggest part of this project is actually the, uh, force main project, which is three and a half miles of sewer line going all the way to the wastewater stream.
Okay, um, so, if we approve this, then that allows you guys to do what, not move forward?
I'm sorry, I didn't understand that.
If we approve this resolution, then this will allow y'all to continue to move forward with y'all's projects, or do y'all gotta apply for something?
No, we've applied to this, it's been approved by the state. They, uh, you know, we're just looking for funding to do, to get permits to do construction, state has reviewed it. They are, to be honest, state is really excited to think that we're taking on this project, it's way overdue.
Alright, thank you so much.
Thank you, sir, and who else would like to perform this one? Councilman in the ninth floor.
So, when I, uh, read my files, I think about something otherwise that will maybe show up on a ballot or a mileage or something to that effect. Is that what will eventually happen here?
No, this is actually paid for by the revenues from the sewer, the water rates and the sewer rates. So the sewer rates, what you pay, what each person who pays for, you know, utilizing the sewer system, those revenues that pay to operate that facility are what's going to pay for this loan.
So, is there enough money already being built that's going to cover that, or we're going to see an increase to cover that?
Well, we're hoping there won't be any, I guarantee that. What we're doing with the, with the improvements we've done at the plant is we've tried to reduce the cost of operating the plant. We've done a lot of energy efficient, um, upgrades. So, we've been saving, I feel like, millions of dollars in the last couple of years, just in the operational costs. So that would help fund the payments for the bonds.
Okay, um, this might be one of those where I need a little time to understand what's going on, especially given that this resolution was sent today as a amendment to the original agenda. So I, I really, I really, really don't know what's going on here, but we just got this added today.
Wow.
So, uh, with this one?
I anticipate at the council meeting, so you can run, run, but, um, we will have the bond term here that can go with depth, um, in some of the, in the council. Things were on a really tight schedule with the Eagle and, um, the financial story, to put these things in place on their milestone schedule. So we've got the schedule, we have to meet, to issue the bonds, we intend to issue bonds, a resolution for that, and I think that it's a forty-five day, um, commentary.
Yeah, I saw something in here about, you know, that, that basically, but this doesn't have to go to the, to the, uh, holders or something to that effect, and it would be, unless there's some kind of petition or request within forty-five days. Here, here or there, I, I guess, I'm hearing you to say it is time-sensitive.
Yes, it is very time-sensitive.
But what I am saying is, if, if, this is just my opinion, if it was that time-sensitive and you've been working on it for months, it wouldn't have been the day above that it finally got the resolution.
About that?
So, I, I'm gonna, I'm gonna be hard, uh, it's gonna be hard for me to just not have time to look at something and just pass the law. And I'm trusting that's not any type of strategic play. And it's, and it's just, you know, we are real busy, but if we've been working on it for months, maybe that last dot T something, it could have been yesterday or last week. I'm, I'm, I'm gonna, I'm, this is not going to committee today.
I might ask you, um, to filter some, some backup.
No, no, I, I, I'm, I'm sorry, I didn't attack you.
No, no, just, the only reason I want to say that is there are so many different pieces coming together with this. We had to do a lot of financial work, you know, the finance department, to determine whether or not the city was capable of taking this on, so.
Yes.
We have, we have a new, uh, new financial advisor, also a consultant, they get through all the work, they're there for, you know, fills relevant communities to, you know, New York City, not in the process for New York City. So, there are a lot of moving pieces. One thing I do want to point out, this is a really unique situation for this particular project. The state got our money for infrastructure, you know, improvements. And what they did is they wanted to
Thank you, is there anyone else who would like to perform this one?
Not, not yet.
Councilman in the second floor.
Thank you, uh, ma'am, I'll, you can proceed on my, you can proceed on my call.
Thank you, um, the uniqueness of this is that, see, our money they have, what they're doing, they're running it through the
I'm sorry, can you please pause this? Start now.
The state is, is using that money through the construction grants program or the, uh, CWSR, SRF, revolving loan fund. And what they're doing is supplying that money as principal forgiveness. And what's attached to this, you can see at the very end of this big long discussion, is that there's a twenty million dollar grant that's, that's from the ARCA funds that will be taken off this whole, which is sixty-six million, nine hundred eighty thousand dollars. So it reduces the amount that we actually have to borrow money, down to forty-six million, nine hundred eighty thousand dollars. The other thing that's unique in this particular project is that the city of Flint is what they call is overburdened, a severely overburdened community. They are giving us this loan at an unbelievably low interest rate of one percent, which they said will never be able to handle. So, I just wanted to point out that this is a very unique opportunity. They will, it was a grant of twenty million dollars and offered a long plan at one percent. The other two months, they ended not at that rate, so.
Okay, um, so I'm thinking that also, um, I, I know that you mentioned that, uh, there's a lot of moving pieces. It looks like a lot of different people are responsible for this, correct?
Right.
Alright, so, um, I want my colleagues right before I understand that, um, if we have shortage, tell me that far.
That's right.
We have a shortage of staff.
Captain, we're trying to fill positions, we're getting close.
Okay, yeah, and so we have a shortage of staff, we have people doing a double job, we have a building, so sometimes things are, they fall apart. So, my definitely, you're saying, thank you so much for sharing that. So, um, just wanted to help to realize, I'm working fairly with my staff, we are severely staffed. So, although, I'm not, I'm not going to say, you know, I do know for a fact that we are short-staffed, so I don't want to, um, leave home this just because it became late, because a lot of times when you don't have staff, it comes late, it comes. So, especially when there's a lot of different people involved, so thank you so much for that. And we are, right now, Madam Chair, we're looking to send this to where?
To council.
To council, alright, very well. Um, so what I will do, um, unless my colleagues, unless, you know, would like to speak over this, I don't want to, I don't want to, alright, very well. Alright, very well. So what I would do, I would go over and send it to this special affairs, and then again, if I have an opportunity to, um, to invest some more cash more here. Does that sound fair to you? College, my board is okay, respond, does that sound fair?
I would have my round.
I would, I'd have my round. I might not have a problem.
Alright, so is there anyone else in the first round from the White House? Alright, so now we're going to the second round. Anybody want to come to the second round? We have to go to the White House.
So you, you, you appear to be speaker. Staff, I did. When did we find out that there's an opportunity to match funds? Did we just find that out this week?
No, we found out with the, um, intended use plan and when the state said that our project was eligible for funding. They looked at all the projects that are submitted and they had over two hundred and fifty projects submitted, and ours came in, I think, number eight.
Out of two fifty?
Out of two fifty.
So how long ago was that?
The intended use plan was submitted, um, probably eight months ago.
I'm talking about, I'm sorry, I'm talking about the approval for the match. When did we find out that there were funds that they were gonna match?
That was in the intended use plan, it was identified there, but that doesn't mean, that doesn't mean that, um, you can start working for it. We needed to look at, they didn't have any clues, you know, we, we guessed at how much it was gonna cost nationally, and it came out costing more than we thought.
Okay.
But, um, we needed to get the engineering done, so we needed to add a lot of.
So, when does the window close for us to say, hey, we have approval to go forward from our council?
Yes, I don't know that date, I have to go look at my files.
Uh, through you, Chair, to the attorney, I know you had some insight here as well.
There was a presentation regarding this bond proposal in the last, maybe two councils, maybe two councils. And we wanted to explain what was happening and that this was a unique opportunity being offered by the state through its Eggel Department to basically rebuild infrastructure regarding the city's, the city sewer system that was in danger of complete collapse and literally flooding the city with sewage.
If I can ask, to, to, when is the date, when is the cutoff?
I do not know, but maybe if Miss Morris here.
I, I just, again, on, on, on some of a understanding, because this afternoon is when I saw this. Now, and, and, uh, with, with whatever respect is due to my, to my colleagues and their availability to review and read or what have you, I'm, I'm not comfortable representing my, those that entrusted me with the vote, to have to turn a vote right now, and I got to do it.
And thank you.
So, so here, here's why, Matt, um, and I, I hear my colleague in the ninth ward. And thank you for, um, for putting us up to speed on this right here. I would suggest that we move this to special affairs, we bring in others that they can answer, um, questions that we don't feel comfortable with. And then, once it leaves special affairs, if you're not comfortable, we can move it back to finance where we can move to council. And that gives us the opportunity, like you said, to short notice today and to have them have to vote on something, this being, he need time. So I would, um, like to make a, um, motion to move this to special affairs.
There's a motion on the floor to, um, move this item two four zero two zero seven to special affairs, is there support?
Support.
It's been moved, they're possibly supported, roll call back, clerk. Mr. Allen?
Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Chad?
Yes.
Mr. Derrick?
No.
The vote is four yes, one no, that won't keep down.
Um, so, since you didn't wanna take this special affair to events more, um, let's see if we can just, we can leave it in, um, finance. Is that fair?
A little bit.
So, I would move, or, um, leave it in finance.
There's a motion on the floor to leave resolution two four zero two zero seven in finance, is there support? It's been moved, they're possibly supported by the council members, first ward, roll call back, clerk.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
This is right?
Yes.
Mr. Derrick?
Yes.
Yes.
Vote is five yes, zero no, that, uh, the motion does pass, a resolution two four zero two zero seven, issuance of bonds, sources, whole system, moving, spreading bonds, system improvements and related cost standing, and priority of clean outstanding bonds, retirement and security of bonds, acceptance of grant authorization of agreement, will stay in finance. Moving on, I know that earlier there was a motion to, um, move close session to after all the resolutions. We've got the resolutions, but we do not have the number needed to move to, um, to move to close session, am I correct, City Attorney?
That is correct.
That is correct, therefore, um, this will, this will just have to stay here in finance. Or unless it's, or in some other way. Uh, so now we move on to special orders. Uh, there's a special order, uh, which is two four zero one nine three, um, special orders reported by councilman Murphy. So, opportunity to, by the, our funds, the city council, Lord, try walking. I will stop this meeting, this discussion now, um, leaving it in White House. It's Council Murphy.
Thank you. So, we, um, awarded the category for, um, each council had a budget of thirty thousand dollars that they needed to use towards staying more to do different projects. We know what we wanna do on third ward, and, um, I guess, at this point in time, I guess we ready to move forward on submitting those priorities to, um, I don't know, through the main, through you to the main, um, how, how does that work? Do we give you this, uh, where our war priorities is, and then you guys go forward? By, um, through you to council board?
Um, thank you. Um, so, you select what you would like to give your ward that's going on, you clear your margin, and you are, you should raise your, shaking your, oh, I just, you are the one.
Hi.
So, I'm gonna give it to you.
Alright, so, to my colleagues, you have a thirty thousand dollar budget that you can, um, use towards your war priorities on, um, projects, or if you got, um, organizations or something in your ward that is requesting funds. I know in my ward, I got about two or three, um, organizations that requested funds, and that I know, um, with Roanoke Park, they only got a half a court, and they get requested to do a full court over there in the Roanoke neighborhood. And then with, um, with, um, Blue Park, they, um, basketball court was from.
Please, one second, can we, can we please stop the time? Please stop yelling out from the audience, thank you. Continue.
So, I'm just giving you guys some examples of, in my ward, some issues. I know, um, Roanoke is getting ready to do a cleanup, so they wanna do some, I think, they're gonna do, you know, want to do some, um, painting and all of that, every kind of stuff. So, you guys have an opportunity to submit priorities of what you would like to see with this fund. This is something that's been allocated here a while ago. So, I just wanted to have this discussion, so some of us that's ready to move forward, to move forward on our war priorities. I'm done.
Thank you, and you also would like to forward this discussion?
Madam Chair.
Councilman in the first ward, you have the floor.
So, can these dollars be leveraged with other dollars to increase, um, say, the instance, we know we got a lot of calls, like in first ward for home repair and so forth, can these dollars be leveraged? Like options and so forth to increase that amount to, to more homes and so forth?
So, um, yes, if this is your money, and as long as it's under the requirement, for, you can, you can receive it in your ward.
And can these dollars also go towards like supporting your business, you know, making taxes, required bills and so forth?
Um, well, if they can use our funds for that, I don't see why not, but again, every single dollar that we spend must be paid for the supplies and fire.
Alright, thank you.
Thank you, is there anyone else who would like to forward this time?
Madam Chair.
Councilman in the ninth ward, you have the floor.
So, is there a, a form that we're gonna use as standards, or is it already in existence?
It's, it's, however you choose, if we're supposed to do a form, you're gonna afford the indication, um, yeah.
So as far as consistency too, does this have to go, if I understand, it's going to, it's going to, uh, Ernst &amp; Young for review, right?
Correct.
Okay, um, and, so there, I'm, I'm hearing also that it is at the council person's discretion, otherwise how it is used, it just needs to be approved by Ernst &amp; Young?
Correct.
Okay, so, but then, so, once they approve it, did I understand correctly that it's gonna be then for a resolution, and it has to be voted on?
Correct.
So in my mind, that almost isn't that any of us is using however we want to, because it's gonna be a vote of five.
Correct.
Well, if, if I may, if you have colleague that supports your initiative, then you can do it.
I understand what we're saying, that, that it would likely be approved? Likely, though.
So the, the thought process behind this is the thirty thousand that you will spend in your ward, however you would like, and you will be subject to your constituency, you do not do it in a way that they like. That your, your, um, judgment tree on that will be your residents.
Okay, so, I understand that this was approved a while ago. Why, why have, have there been a delay in, in?
Good question.
So you wanna know why it's been delayed, they didn't explain this one?
No, both of you, you're open.
I'm bringing your order, stop. So the reason why it's been a delay is because no one wants to, we've been voting on one other thing, so you can bring it to the floor whenever she's there.
Okay.
But it doesn't mean that others have not already been working in their own ward, it's just this is.
I get that, um, you know, I, I get that, and quite, quite frankly, I am, thankful, appreciative of the fact that for the ninth ward, they hadn't been expended until now, because as the, you know, seated, elected official, um, I get to utilize them in a way, in, in collaboration with the constituents, um, I, I do have a certain amount of concern around these funds, especially where we are today. Uh, I have concern about these funds being used potentially in a political fashion. How we might, maybe, maybe part of that conversation could be that for, um, for seats where, um, there may be some question, maybe that, that usage currently be set at fifteen thousand and allow for whomever is gonna take the seat after the pending, um, election. When they, they are seated through election, they get use and benefit of that other fifteen thousand. Um, that's, that's just me, in, in this rare opportunity that I think I'll have to dialogue with my colleagues in a special order where we don't have to worry about as much taking a floor, having a floor taken, and being able to sort of speak amongst each other, you know, just out of kindness and vision, that might be fair. I, I, you know, I, I come here really wanting to work with whoever's committed in these other areas, and I wanna do it in a way that, um, I'm, I'm not concerned about making enemies, but I'm also equally not as concerned about making friends, I just wanna make for a good work. There, we are, we are, you know, equal parts civil and respectful. So I, 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 I do wanna see us doing good work, and I believe there will be good work that we can and will do with this, with these funds that are at our discretion. Um, I, I just do have, again, those questions and reservations, and I'll see to it.
Is there anyone else who would like to forward this time?
Thank you, Madam Chair. Alright, so, you know, I, I definitely hear what he's saying, with all respect, um, the ninth ward problem are different than the North Side problem. And so, uh, what a lot of us have, we have had, we have spoken about this, you've heard that they've been doing this, and we're happy, and actually has great freedom to do. And so, the next step is for us to get prepared by the party, one thing I don't wanna do, I don't wanna, um, make it appear that, um, we are fighting, uh, that we're using funds for political gain. What we're doing, we're using funds to make ourselves better, and we were doing it before you guys here, and we'll continue to do that. And so we, apparently, you would like us to vote for it. And, um, and so I'll say how to, again, your constituents, so you can find out how you should use your money. We, we will, I'm definitely hoping to do that, but you know, when you run through the second ward and you see grass up to your waist, when you have, uh, other road issues, when you have other issues that you must attack. When, when you see those things, there is not an option, you understand what I'm saying? So while we are in these seats, it's our duty to do the best in our word, so I don't see why all of a sudden we have to put a, a dollar on, on what we're doing. We didn't wanna just work on the team doing the work, I believe for what you, you're gonna work as well.
Thank you, and would anyone else like to forward this time?
Madam Chair.
You have the floor.
I have a question, can we, um, can council members collaborate to the projects and if they're worth it, we drop?
Absolutely.
Thank you, is anyone else?
Alright, so I, I do want to, oh, wait.
Um, here, here, here's, here's why, Matt. We've been allocated these wars accounts prior to, um, Candace getting here, prior to Leon getting here. What I don't wanna do is use this platform as a platform based on, um, political motives when it comes down to people recalling us, because that's what democracy look like. People have an opportunity and a right, and regardless of whether we're here today or gone tomorrow, that's what democracy look like, people have a right to, um, recall us, people have an opportunity to run for office, you just did, and you was, um, uh, elected, congratulations. But what I don't wanna to see us do is use this platform as council members to bring in the politics of, 'cause somebody exercising their right to recall us, or someone, um, is running for office or got appointed a position, the opportunity to be able to do things in their ward because they is exercising their right to run for office. So we wanna penalize them because they running for office, it's not right, and that is not what we look at when it comes down to, um, the, um, when we look at the priorities and we said we wanted to allocate thirty thousand dollars, we didn't put no restrictions on there, and we didn't say, okay, um, what if you get recalled during this time? Or what if you resign as, um, someone get appointed? I, I'm not gonna get in that, but what I will do is present my war priorities to this council body, and if we can get five votes to vote for our projects, then that's what we do, but I'm not gonna get into this politics stuff. I'm not gonna start that, and I ain't gonna, I'm not gonna get that.
Alright, so, you know, everyone's spoken, I don't wanna take my time. I, I am assuming, as Councilman Murphy pointed out, that everyone is clear that a lot of this was done before, most of us is currently sitting up here right now, or even on council. Um, I, and I would not assume that anyone would be implying that integrity is not in place, or that somehow, um, all of a sudden, we cannot do our jobs that we've been doing since we've been appointed and or elected to do, should have to cease simply because, um, like Quincy said, democracy is taking place. The whole point in us being, you're both being appointed and elected is for us to do our jobs, no matter what, no matter if you being in the seat may or may not be, um, a few weeks or months from now. The reality is that I have, and you know this for a reason, because you've come to meetings, my colleague in the ninth ward, been working on these projects for months with people in my ward. And so the same way that we're saying we hope it's not political in us expending these funds, that we hope it's not political in the stop of us trying to spend these funds. Furthermore, um, friendship is not a requirement at all for us to do our jobs, okay? The only thing that is required is professionalism, and so losing or gaining a friend is not a thought to mind as we go through this. And so as we move forward, like my colleague said, all this been learned before three of us were even here. And so now to talk about halting something that residents have been working with their council people on simply because there are unfair implications is absolutely crazy. To say something so unfounded is absolutely ridiculous. I do want to make sure that, that, um, all of our ward know that when it comes to stuff like this, we will not interfere with one another. If you said that you talked to your ward, and you vengated with your ward, and you knew something that your ward does not like, that is on you to have to deal with your ward for not doing something that they like. That is completely on you, because a, as we all know, and, um, we are subjected to, especially when you are. to, especially when we are elected, we're subjected to recalls and everything else. So the trust has to be here that everybody is willing to do what's best for their ward, that the conversations are happening with their ward, that influence that they're getting for spending these dollars are simply coming from their ward, that they're being there across their ward in the expenditure of these dollars. I'm happy that we are having this conversation for everybody to kind of lay it out and get an understanding of the process. It is my understanding that, um, when this process works is hopefully you will all get back to your ward, discuss with people in your ward, whichever way you choose to do it, but to discuss with people in your ward how they would like this money expended. Not only that, but after you discuss with them how they would like the money expended that you were getting, or the compliance firm, the compliance firm will tell you that you are in compliance and then you will present a plan that you and your ward have come up with before this council and that this council would respect what you've submitted and respect you as the voice for your ward. Thank you. Um, and at this time, this will end our, uh, special order.
Do you have like two minutes left?
Yes. Um, there's a question on the floor for John, is there support? Is the group properly supported, roll call, man, hard?
They mad, they.
Ms. Sanders?
Yes.
So Jared?
Yes. Yes.
Yeah.
The vote is five, yes, zero, no. I call this, uh, meeting, um, I now adjourn this meeting of, uh, the Finance Committee.
Many comments, Jen. It's happening, Jen, you getting out with intelligence and brains.
Um, cause it's legislative, um, meeting to order, roll call, man.
What meeting is this?
Um, is there any changes or additions to the agenda? Are there any changes or additions to the agenda? So?
Yes, um, unfortunately, um, we missed any of the orders that should have been, um, on the legislative agenda, it's not special fair to postpone back to legislative and that is orders number two four zero one six eight, which is the older version of orders, not the much of orders, which would be regular on the chance to postpone orders.
So, board, um, well, pleasure.
Uh, I guess orders number two four zero one six eight, in order to amend the court ordinance of, um, many of the old section was postponed back to legislative and last special affairs committee, which was the state of the law to the agenda, um, asking if we add this kind of.
Do you have a copy of it for all of us?
Yes, but I was gonna, yeah, I was just, um, gonna put the other those add, explanation.
What's the pressure of the law? I would like to add it on agenda without any objection. Say that again?
I'd rather have it both in next legislature. Is there someone here from higher terms?
We could, we could still add it on agenda when it's postponed to.
Okay, that's not.
Yeah, yeah. So, yes, I would like to add it on agenda without any objection. Alright, um. With that, only one change, now is the time for public speaking. First Republican speaker.
The first speaker is Murphy Nolanda.
Say it again.
Jeremy Nolanda.
No, 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 Brenda.
I think she gone.
Next speaker is Aron Delmisher.
Hello, my name is Aron Delmisher, and, uh, I'm in the third board, Southern Fifty-Ninety Senate, um, America, as you heard, uh, about three times just now, a minute ago, we are on the, the list of, out of two hundred states in America, number eight, a burden city and, but the state don't give us one percent. But the one percent is twenty million dollars and the other thing about this, about this situation, we on the tab limit thing like this, ninth ward is talking about. They always full of busting around where they want to throw, throw away thirty million dollars a week, but we feel as though we can get further penalized or looked down on like we don't know what we doing in America and Flint and Miss Bashak and the new three newcomers home this board. You see, we just barely maybe caught the shade bunch, they lost their vote and ninth ward coming in and making messing up their plan like Tiger Woods messing up the white man game, stepping on the D and making Peter Black back on the aisle and take that, America, but, and those people going to watch that, kids are getting graduated from them high school to them at the same time and we still taking care of business, thanks to, uh, Rosalind over there, City Court, uh, Jack, yeah, and another thing, when this business coming through, Flint like this, we don't tell old practice, all new practice, the first practice in Flint is drag the upgrade, the product out, doing, who y'all, there we go, we go, we put the history project without your, Mr. Murphy, without your input, looking up and taking over the same job, without you, you ain't standing by, ain't doing nothing like with due point, Jane P. Call, and rearranging stuff from me, twenty act, talking about rearrange Flint from a quarter, he gotta come out, dumb line, dude, giving people the right to Flint, I see the trees in Flint and game was given, given then, got to have fun in ice and he was digging Flint and scared to hire people, scared to talk up and, like what is scared to talk up, we already showed that, drunken, clicks, go, dig that up, up, hold on.
The next speaker is John McFadden.
I think she is gone, John McFadden. Next speaker.
The next speaker is Sherri Smith.
I think she is gone too, next speaker.
Next speaker is A.C. Gilmas.
A.C. Gilmas, I'm now, uh, Commissioner Lloyd. So you sat on the seat. I want to say this, first of all, the thirty thousand dollars, they used to have ward accounts, I've been around a long, probably for some of y'all before, most of it, they used to have ward accounts and the highest ward account there was was ten thousand dollars and they would do things in the ward. This is not but a political slush account. To, to make the resident think you're doing something. You ain't doing nothing and they see far beyond the political slush account. And Mr. Jared, don't let them beat you down, because they'll, you know, they'll appreciate that you're evil and you don't agree with him, you're evil. The honeymoon is over. I'm gonna say that and we're watching, because you don't move me, not at all. Now we got this, uh, ordinance to change the rule, this only time, but please don't even send it to, don't even vote on it, because you know why? It weaponizes the resident. They'll take those police officer back there and weaponize us. They have put people out eighty years old out of this chamber. I'm loyal, please don't. We know where they are. So I'm, I'm saying what I'm saying. You know, well, what about this area, Mr. Murphy over there? What about the other area? You need votes over there. See, you need votes and you going for votes. Mr. Bashak, don't act like, well, we're not politi, it is political and you know it's political. I ain't saying he's stealing money, I'm just saying it's political and you'd be crazy if you didn't use that political. I know if I was in your seat, I wouldn't, but you not me and I'm not you. So, I said what I said and I meant what I said. I'm a senior citizen, but I'm not senile. I don't get that, I'm taking a little bit. Thank you for this opportunity to set the record straight.
Adele got a mic.
The next speaker is Raj Ram.
Thank you, God.
Ram.
Thank you, God.
The next speaker is, just for the record, the new speakers list has check marks for each committee, so I'm going to assume that if you did check that relax, you don't want to speak at all in legislature, so, Ms. January Arva, just want to make sure. Um, next speaker is Juan Terry. And Saint Christmas Allison, I'm going to put John, just, let's play with the position.
She gone.
Next speaker will be Ms. De Taylor.
So I have a couple of points I'd like to make, that I don't think Flint can afford any more bonds or loans. I think we are in there, everybody knows it, that's why I'm having, I'm a front end of our family, so we really have to be very careful about that. I want to reiterate that Oak Park is equally as important as Pierce Park. The other point I want to make is we had a chance to save the Patterson Building that was on white black land, but no, we wanted to do political favors for community first. We have to know that those things are happening in our face. Now, nobody wants to look at it when they're talking. The other item is number four is the police. They got to leave the council because they're not here for us. So the other thing I wanted to mention is, Miss Bashak, Mashak, do you live in an apartment or a house? Because at the College of Cultural Neighborhood Meeting, there's other members are here with me this evening, you noted that you mow your lawn, but if you live in an apartment, you're not mowing your lawn. And I think that you modeled, that I had lied when I spoke the last time. I think that's what you modeled, I hope it is on film, um, I don't think you should talk to constituents that way, um, I have never accused you of lying, um, not to say that I won't. The other thing, I see how sidewalks are important to all of us, but we can't choose who gets this, gets this, we have to do a better service for the community and again, we cannot afford any loans, we can't afford any loans. My water bill is already carrying loans. And again, I want to say if you're going to do any changes for meetings, if you're going to do any changes for, um, hearings for your rules, again, you define these rules, you should have a public hearing, you should ask the community, what do you think about us reducing your time to speak? Oh, and, and I think those thirty thousand dollar, um, I think those are the T-shirts, you'll be walking around with T-shirts on that said, I gave this to the neighborhood because you're concerned about being recalled and the community does have an opportunity, um, democratically to recall whoever we think is supporting the community. And the other thing is Mrs. McClinton and all of the communities ask for our money to be used specifically to a household, but you get to decide whether a, a house gets a, a furnace in.
The next speaker is Claire McLean.
Say it one more time.
Claire.
Oh, Claire McLean.
Claire McLean, Flint resident, I didn't get in the brief three minutes a chance to congratulate our new council person, Mr. Jerry, congratulations. You have a legacy family in the city of Flint and here you are, here in Norfolk, so thank you for that. And I hope that the council will look at the resolution that said that the clerk must inform the city about foreclosures and we have asked time and time again to have the attorney look into that and see that the city received notice about the hundred and nine homes, nobody wants to answer it. Why, I don't know, but if the county violated that and we're told they did inform the other cities, there were two hundred and twenty homes, Flint had a hundred and ninety, then soon as the, the investors purchased the homes, y'all rushed some money over there to legal aid. Legal aid can't do nothing for them. Just make sure they give a proper notice or you evaded enough, that's not what we want. If the county violated that ordinance and they sent notices to the other communities, then the treasurer need to void that contract with the investors and let the people stay in their home. So I don't have anything else to say, we're looking forward to rehab, rehabilitation and it's no secret, all, the, the recalls and the, the, the elections and all, it is political, it's all political. It will make a difference on the outcome of these races, it will. And it should. Thank you, and it should, thank you very much.
The next speaker is Richie Jones. The next speaker is Richie Jones.
How y'all doing today? Um, I just want to come up here and tell y'all, once again. I ain't getting tired. I may have been missing, but I'm, I ain't tired, I watched the last meeting, another bonfire. Made me in history for all the wrong stuff. All around the nation, people are watching what's taking place at these meetings. Somebody gonna be knocking on y'all doors and y'all might not want to answer. I always say, I'm gonna say it to you. Don't do nothing that will not allow you to answer your door. Right now, some of the things that y'all are doing is bringing a whole lot of negative attention to this city. Nationwide negative attention. And it's ridiculous. Because y'all should have a reputation of helping the people. It hurt me so bad at that last meeting question. When you went up there and talking about the people that pay their water bill. When you know that seventy percent of our water bill is the KWA bar. And you know that we can't drink. Straight out of our seats, even from the houses or this or something else. That, I hope you be aware of. We start at the wrong end of conversation. Let's talk about our pipe replacement. They should have been replacing stuff from the water plant up to our home. Instead of replacing the lines, which give you our filters. And the tax on the Jewish city project. They should have told the people, we're gonna tax you seventy-two million dollars. We're gonna clean up the site. We're gonna build a building, we're gonna get somebody to occupy this building, and then we're gonna hire three thousand people. That's a fifteen to twenty year process. You did not say that, it may be less, I may be wrong on that, and it may be less. But instead of saying that, you said, three thousand jobs. I'm not gonna stop three thousand jobs from this year. Should have started from, and another question. On the old, when y'all built that old park next to the old park. Is y'all really gonna put a battery plant there?
Of course.
Because I feel that y'all should put a battery plant on the old Jewish site. That's already contaminated. And y'all will have to come here, but, so I just didn't talk, but I'll do.
I just want to say to the ward, the first ward, the ninth ward, these are the wards that I'm making reference to. It's not gonna come down to us, it's gonna come down to us on you. And then I want to be able to say a shout out to My City Magazine, the May edition. I briefly read, and then I was happy to see. Something that should be pointed out, and I'm hoping that most people. If y'all know about the My City Magazine, go to the library, it's there for free. They do have Councilman of the First Ward and, and his previous business. And what they're doing in taking young carpenters, taking carpenters to make a difference for families to be able to take. A majority of old homes that we have here in the city of Flint, and making them livable again. I applaud everyone that here on the floor is watching, go to the public library. Enjoy the library, but take a look at the May edition of My City. It's, it's actually, uh. It's actually a good program that they're doing, and I wish that they would do more to point out what's going on in our city. Uh, the newspaper doesn't seem to do it, so maybe My City too. And I wish that they would point out how hard the people of the city of Flint work to clean their yards up. And if it's nine wards and if they had ten people, we could write you different articles on just how well it is in Flint. And then the last one, they got a commercial going out talking about manufacturing and all of this here. All of the great things that's happening, and all of the things that's gonna come. I want to say to the people that's doing it, why would you say it's Genesee County when it's here in Flint? You don't even bring us up.
Next speaker.
That was it.
Okay, um, council response, any council respond? Any council? One once, four twice? Um, I would like to respond. Um, will you respond to this?
Hey, see, you talked about the ward accounts. And what our priorities, and it is political. But one thing about Councilman Mike. And maybe you still can't. Grasp the fact that I am the Councilman in the third ward. Two years ago, I went over and watched them kids play. In Roman Wood Park, one basketball court. I told them kids, I'll come back and I'll do what I can to help bring a full court. Because it's a lot of play over there, it's a lot of activity. And while you riding around. Trying to find, uh, things to, um. Criticize in the third ward, go there in Roman Wood Park on a hot day and see how. Them kids is playing basketball on one court, and then he says you went to Jewish park. Let me, um, get back out your car again, since you like to ride around. And when you go up Jewish park, all you gotta do is pull up on Moore Street. Look at that basketball court, two boats holding up the basketball rim. Next time, walk the, um, basketball court and see what's going on. Instead of you, matter of fact, go down Holbrook Street and go to the church and look at the laundry mat. Instead of you trying to embrace positive stuff in the third ward, every time you hit that podium. You don't have nothing but negative stuff to talk about when it comes down to this community. Or what somebody ignoring because they ain't knowing what you do. It'll be a cold day in the hell before I follow you.
For the legislative, um. The legislature of the body for, um, I would like to do a consent agreement with any separate restaurants.
Um, Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Uh, I make a motion to you over the way it's in.
There's been a motion made to do a consent agreement, is there a second? Support it. Has there been, um, a motion made and supported by Councilman Dr. Lewis, is there any separation? Yes, um, Councilman, um, Garrett.
Let's go ahead and say this. Let's go ahead and separate two four zero one nine one.
Two four zero one nine one. Okay, um. Is there any other separation, I know you wanted to, um. Keep the, um, add-on or, you want to separate that? Okay.
Two four zero one six eight.
So that would be two four zero one six eight. We want to separate those. Um. Roll call, want to press for a consent agreement. Professor DeHaux, excuse me, the consent agreement for ordinance two four zero one nine two. Amendment of the ordinance chapter forty-six utilities article two large supply. It's through the disposal division, party division, and last third of all.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
No, there was no actual motion made, it was just, it said, um, I mean, I won't present it, but it was to be.
That was the motion made with the consent agreement to go through. But we separated the two, um, option, and Garrett.
Still, um, thanks.
Yes.
Mr. Lewis.
Yeah.
Mr. Murphy.
Yes.
Mr. Chad.
Yes.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
The board is back, yes, you're welcome.
Alright, um. Five years from zero to no, that motion is. Our, um, first separation is two four zero one nine one. Amendment to ordinance chapter thirty-one general offenses article one. In general section thirty-one ten, this ordinance has a default battery and this ordinance personal. Um, that ordinance to amend chapter thirty-one general offenses article one in general of the code of the city of Flint. By amendment section thirty-one dash ten, this ordinance has a default battery. And this ordinance personal note, this ordinance shall become effective thirty days after, in, exactly. This separation was by Councilman, um, Garrett, uh, which the pleasure of this body for this ordinance.
Um, I'd like to make a motion to the new. Resolution two four zero one nine one to himself.
So, what's.
Counsel.
There's been a motion to move two four zero one nine one to council that is supported.
Support.
There's been a motion to support this, any special? Um, Councilman Garrett.
So. I'm, I'm somewhat assuming that this, uh, ordinance is being amended. As a result of some of the behavior in the chambers. Um. That. Sort of said, I'm looking at some of the words that are used. And. For example, in. In the, in the resolution under definition five. Threatens the expression of an intent.
Form is broken. No, form is broken. Point of order, I'm calling the audience to the board.
Um, threat means the expression of an intent. When I see that word intent. The, that, that. It seems like there's a difference in, in, in distinction between what I would otherwise hear. Um. The elected officials say, when we say we don't know each other's intent. But at this point, are you gonna be the arbiter of what someone's intent is outside of the nine of us? Um. I, I, I just, um, I don't know if. For the years that we have had. This body. If we may have something to do with why this is necessary today.
They didn't want to hear that.
Wanna myself see if we can do different. Which might cause for. Uh, they to do different, and I need, I need to put rules in place that should speak to. What otherwise we view for what one of you has to call. So I'm, I'm, I'm really. I'm, I'm really not adopting today. Or even moving this to council today. Um, because I don't know that this is necessary. When we model what we expect.
Right.
Of us.
Alright, so according to this resolution, I would recommend not to go forward because nothing that we're voting for, we're voting for. Yeah, we're voting for the safety and security of all council members, and not just council members, I mean, all the officials, elected officials, the city employees. And so what I will not do, I will not go to, um, to not ensure them the safety that they need to do in their job. As someone on the other end, I'm not sure if our college in the last world was here that day. But you know, when you have also people yelling at all of them, they wanna quote-unquote beat your ass. And as well as. Um, I'm bringing you a voter, so that's your warning.
I feel.
So again, this is a professional legislative body. And this legislative body is set by certain rules. And these rules demand that the people that are in attendance, that they have to form. And that forms, that includes be able to do your job in a non-perpetual environment. And so when we say that we're not going to support this, it gives an impression that we're not for working in a, in a safe, stable environment. Or it gives you an impression that if this happens to someone else, it's okay. And so what we need to do, we need to make sure that we are providing safety for everyone. And that includes elected officials, that includes appointed officials from our board. Um, Mr. Jones. And let's not get. Okay, you read my report. So. From our elected seats, I have, it is not a threat from the colleagues in the DAs. But we had several instances of having Ryan's behavior in these chambers. We had aggressive behavior towards colleagues in these chambers. We had people from the audience brought up to elected officials in these chambers. And we want to make sure that we have a safe, working environment. So I just encourage, I just encourage, um. I just encourage our colleagues to think about that. Because it's, because it's not happening, because I mean it's not a problem, we want to make sure that we're setting the tone for future council people. We're setting the tone for future appointed people. We're setting the tone for future staff members that we have yet to hire. It's important, because no one else can come to a place that's not, that unsafe. We have a lot of residents, they don't even want to come. They don't want to come to this place, because they feel unsafe. Because people are being threatened at the letter as they're speaking. People are yelling out, violating several kinds of rules. So we want to make sure that we have the environment that we need to conduct the city's business. And that includes making sure that everyone that needs to be protected underneath the law, and this is what it is. So again, I implore my colleagues to think about not only the safety of yourself, but other, who is on the board, whoever. Think about the safety of the, of the, of the, um, city workers. We have city workers. We have city workers that also got aggressively approached by, um, by members of, um, we need to make sure that we're thinking about individuals in the future, because you're not gonna be, you're not gonna be in these seats always. And a lot of times, it's not even entirely just serving these seats. So, being that people may feel unsafe, that may be another barrier that could be, so let's make something great for the city. Let's make sure that people never feel unsafe, because as you see, this meeting can be very productive. This meeting can, um, flow, and we can get the business of the city done, whether it's all over here or not, not all over here. You vote the way you want to vote, then go home, this is the way the body's supposed to operate. We wanna make sure that we are being honest with that. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Is there any others speaking?
Uh, Mr. Garrett.
Yes.
Uh, I want to, now, but, and ask my colleague in the second one to speak, definitely calmly staying focused, that there are members of the audience who is voting, and very recently, this is the interesting. Um, I want to re-clear that this is not something that's been entered into lightly, and that, um, there are things that happen in chambers around the country that do, that, that, things that happen here don't happen all around the country. There are people who show up and are able to go to meetings and feel safe at meetings, they don't feel threatened at these meetings, um, they're, they're not having to contact their elected official and say, hey, when I was at this meeting, um, I was threatened, or this happened, or that happened, the concern has to be for everyone in the city, and not just those, like few, see, even as I'm speaking now, all of this behavior is simply to get a reaction, when all the clients is the business of the city. But we know right now, we should not be yelling out in chambers, we should not be walking back and forth on purpose trying to be a distraction. I think that our respect absolutely has to go both ways, I think we've, uh, sat here even tonight, with certain things that have occurred and continue our meetings in spite of what's happening. And so, the only thing that I can say is, I want to, this is the best example, and I am happy that the city of Flint now has its own YouTube channel, so that everyone can see the totality, the full behavior of everything that's happening, and that they have modified, so that the entire country, the residents of Flint can see the actual story of what goes on in these chambers, how it happens, and why we have, or will be in that circumstance in our meetings. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Is there any others speaking? In the first round. Is there anybody else who would like to speak in the second? Councilman, Eric.
Absolutely support, absolutely support having a working environment that is safe and stable. I also, in that, believe that is the responsibility of all. That is just that. Again, the reason why you will hear a no vote on this from me. You have, as a, as a council, an opportunity, in the thirty days, however long you can be brought back, to demonstrate that we are setting a different tone in each chamber. That causes others to be penalized, and not us demonstrating that we are holding ourselves.
I'll go ahead and speak, thank you, and so, although, uh, I, I hear my colleagues in the night before talking about demonstrated behavior, but just like the colleagues staffed for us said, we sat here patiently and quietly in our seats. When we had people running around, sign, to be a distraction, when we had people yelling out, when we had people yelling out telling the vice president to shut up, all this happened while you sat in that seat.
We also, like, you tried to find somebody while he's saying that.
Point, point of order, yeah. Definitely, where my audience member, I don't know specifically who it is, but I can hear you. Um, corner, we don't, I can hear you. Thank you. Yeah, so, um, so colleague in the night board, you just heard the yelling out, and then she, she, she got brought the order, she sent in.
But it's not a threat.
This is the behavior, that we're, and this is the, this ordinance is.
It's not a threat.
I'm calling, um, audience member in the hat, I'm giving you your first warning.
Thank you, sir.
Again, colleagues in the night board, we implore you to open your eyes, take a look, take a listen, at what's happening right before you, to your colleagues, this is happening in real time. So, but, again, ma'am, you keep yelling out.
I just said it wasn't a threat.
Um, that's your second warning, officer, can you?
No, I can walk out on my own, officer, thank you, thank you. No, you don't have to call the police on me, Quincy. I can walk out on my own, I walked in here by myself, that's the violence I'm talking about, I feel threatened, I feel threatened. What about me, what about my rights, who can protect me, I feel threatened. All you have to do is ask me to leave. You don't have to call the police on me. I feel threatened, I feel threatened. You just called this officer over here to me to threaten me to get up out of here, shame on you. I'm just leaving, I don't need nobody to walk me out, I'm forty-seven years old, I don't need no escort.
So, colleagues in the night board, this is a violate, colleagues in the night board, this is a violation of the period. This is a violation, colleagues in the night board, can you hear this, this is why we got a lawyer, that's why we're looking to catch them. Of course, this, this only works if it goes subsection. When you, when you disrupt an orderly meeting, you are violating, that law is violating.
My question is, what just transpired, does it speak to any of the, of the part of the ordinance suggesting change?
No, she quieted out.
What just transpired when you?
Um, um, to stop the time, there's been running the time, and that's my time. So, you keep your time on the side.
What just happened is, we have a law, our subject matter, our subject matter is the, um, separation that you, um, separated with, with this ordinance conduct. In our discussion, the audience is blurting out, we gave them the opportunity to speak three minutes for a public comment, and they had our tools to sign up. We cannot allow, while we haven't got it all, the audience to just blurp out and be speaking like that, while we haven't got it all, versus concerning the resolution. So, I called them to order the first time, gave them their first warning, just to let them know that I can hear you speaking out. Then they continued, the second warning, you gotta go, because at this point, you ain't listening to what we trying to do, we just trying to get the business, so that's what you decide.
Alright, so I, I.
Request for information.
Yes.
Is, does the chair know that he was asking about, um, section A, number four eight five?
They don't listen?
Oh, no, I didn't know that.
So, he don't listen?
I, I thought you were talking about this. So, what was the question again?
Does, what just transpired, does, is that in any way speak to, to see threat against local public official or the definitions, that, that, that was that? Okay, that right. Alright, thank you.
Damn.
Alright, so, you remember, number two?
Is that good? You want me to do some time there?
No.
No.
All points to you.
Oh, thank you, so, just because that was not a threat that got me that against this ordinance, because the ordinance, uh, again, to follow law. You cannot be this, this order, you cannot cause a disruption of meaning, so you don't have to measure a threat to be disorder. And so, we must keep that in mind, so one thing that we should not do, we shouldn't wait for more threats come, because if you will like, I, I trust that since you went from seat. Okay, um, is, is that Ms. Danford, is that the rest board?
Oh, wow. She don't even remember what it was.
Please stop, that's a member of the Evans and Accountability Board, so.
First of all, I'm not here asking you to run anything, um, I'm here as a citizen of the city of Flint, for six, excuse you, so you can correct that, excuse yourself, excuse yourself. You don't say nothing to me, I don't say nothing.
That's your first one.
You ain't got to give your first, second, or third, 'cause I'm the leader, so you just remember that. No, I'm sorry, that's your shit, 'cause I'm the leader.
Where we going here?
I don't, what did I just tell you, I'm here on my own merit.
Own merit.
I'm not here for the Evans and Accountability Board, so you can shut your goddamn mouth up.
So, again, Councilman in the night board, this is what we have to put up with, this is a member of our board that has been charged, that has been charged upon the Evans and Accountability of the city, just told our, the chair to shut his goddamn mouth up. These are the things that we're trying to make sure that we eliminate. We had, we had someone call the vice, uh, president, a ton, and walked out. We had, this, this is real life and real time, so we don't wanna act like this is not happening when it is. So, again, I implore you, before someone else gets, gets there, asks, threatens us to be reached, before someone, before things go violently out of these chambers, we need to make sure that everyone's being protected underneath the law, and that's exactly what this ordinance is setting to do. Thank you.
Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this? Is there anyone else who would like to speak on this? Okay, this motion is to.
That was the second round.
I think.
That was the second round.
Mr. Chair, man, sorry.
Oh, okay.
Yes, you asked, was anybody else like, okay, does that mean to, um, thank you, I think the behavior that we just offered itself, thank you.
Oh, wow.
Any other discussion? CNN, um, this is, uh, motion to, move this to the council. Roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
Ms. Murphy?
No.
Mr. Chair?
Yes.
Mr. Chair? The board, two guests, you know?
They didn't have a vote, too.
Alright, they have motion failed.
By the way, this is.
Yes.
I would put no vote forward to move this, um, to keep this in, uh, this legislature.
There's a motion to keep, um, ordinance two four zero one nine one, and let's play, let's support.
I support.
Has been moved and supported? Roll call, Madam Clerk. Yes.
Mr. Chair?
No.
She is sick. Yes.
Ms. Lewis?
Yes.
She's sick.
Four, yes, one, no?
That motion fails.
They sick. They don't know what to do.
Our next, um, separation is, separation two four zero one nine one, um, ordinance, section, call, one, chapter, or air pollution control is here, by the name of, for the city of Flint, section one, an ordinance to amend the Flint City Call, an ordinance by amendment chapter four, air pollution control, by amendment section four, that thirteen, opening burning, which shall read, in this entirety, as filed, uh, get on.
Mr. Chair, I'd like to put a motion on for two, the resolution two four zero one six eight, here in this meeting.
That's in the motion, put on for two, the resolution two four zero one six eight, and legislature. This is for, this is the move.
Mr. Chair.
Yes.
Um, I know we talked about this earlier, one is giving our colleague in the night board an opportunity to start up on this particular resolution, uh, and then.
I bring three hundred people to you, I'm talking about. But I'm ready to shut it down.
Uh, concerning this resolution, and then also, um, there, there are rules in terms, when we start talking about open burning, and what is allowed, we talk about fire safety, we start talking about air quality hazards, there are a lot of things that, um, have to be discussed, and so I cannot wait for the, uh, fire department to stand before us, so that we can have this discussion about, uh, potentially moving forward or just lose, I think it's, thank you.
Any other discussion? Any other discussion? CNN, roll call, Madam Clerk.
Mr. Chair?
Yes. Yes.
Foods?
Yes.
Five years, zero, that motion is standing in legislature, I'll, I'll, entertain you for one motion till John. Is the motion.
They got one matter wrong. Yeah, they got a governmental operation.
Yes.
They got one thing going.
Yes.
Human relations committee.
Yes.
Five years, the reason is, is, is this going to you?
I got one thing to do on this.
The time is now eight twenty-one PM on Wednesday, May twenty-second, I hereby call this Governmental Operations Committee meeting to order roll call, Madam Clerk.
Ms. Lewis?
President.
Ms. Lewis?
President.
Ms. Murphy?
Yes, President.
It's present.
Mr. Chair?
Present.
Do you have five members present?
We have five members present, are there any requests for agenda changes and revisions? Seeing as how there are none who will not move to public comment, uh, members of the public who wish to address the city council or its committees must register before this meeting, about to be placed at the entrance to the city council chambers for a collection of registrations, no additional speakers or slips will be accepted after the meeting begins. Members of the public shall have no more than three minutes per speaking during public comment, with one speaking opportunity per speaker, all speakers are subject to this orderly person's exception, first, uh, public speaker, Madam Clerk.
First speaker is, uh, Lorenzo. Next speaker is Arnold. Next speaker is Arnold.
Oh, my. Oh, that's a fire department. And team challenge. You should, to, to speak up for them thirty billion dollars is gonna get wasted because of sound. It's time sensitive. You should all take plumber's license. Because if you don't have plumber's license, you can't turn over the old pipes in the ground without plumber's license. But you, you, you can, but once you do it, you'll get penalized just like all the inspectors in Flint. It don't count, that's how the land might gather up with all them houses they got, free and all free land. People don't talk about that stuff. And it's like, see, all the teams that eighteen years old is oky, boarding oky dokeys like they don't know nothing. They got just enough to be the president of city, of the school council, what they got just enough to speak up for themselves without letting you put words in their mouth. For in those that went, Paul Harvey back there. Got it on film, got their YouTube stuff, taking it and break that came up there on purpose for the people in other cities. Don't mention, don't want to know, don't want people to know what really going on in Flint. Use, uh, this uh industrial city. Talking about uh burning down cities, uh, all that junk and women's shit. Uh, worth it, twenty million dollars and all that stuff. What they, what they educating them people though? School board talking about team telling June eighteen and jump. Only got one more year to be a teenager, nineteen, and when you go from there. And you're gonna come and be a crack because you can't get no, start your own business and go to the soup kitchen. Have a car. Who telling, Eartho generation, be my mother's scat, scat ten K and all that junk. Oh, yeah, busting to, night board, sir. You said this got ten K, see? Ignore it, over in your woodpile, your boy from southwestern. All that junk. Like you didn't take damn off to go see his son graduate when people putting this on the sag, check, assessing this thing. Talking about, you got to some know how to run the city of Flint. Give me that money back and actually the lawyer you lock. A lawyer don't ever know, can't get you a spaniel back, look at him. And Tim sitting in the background, uh, and looking at a newcomer on the board, got you looking curious. And, and, and he bleeding over there, right there, right in your face, running against the system. The feedback, because he don't, they got over there. Uh, they kind of over there on, on, big road, right in college. You see they, they getting down, just enough to kick you on college, you been. Yeah, don't, don't throw them out with all that junk. What you got on joint college? Scared, fuck, set peace to the Middle East. All them guys talking about junk, gotta figure out how to jump on Israel. Like the dude with the hell of God's trash. Or Abraham, what, you know all that? Jump, use peace to the Middle East, like you already, all the Americans, take that.
Mr. Chair, it's AC news.
This, this been me interesting.
Yeah, definitely.
Well, again, AC news. I just wanna, I do have a secret question for this council, I don't know everything. But at the absence of a chair, does not the president take the chair? When the absence of a chair, nonetheless, uh, Ms. Michelle was appointed by the president as the chair of this committee. Voted on by the council. If that didn't happen, my question is, why did Ms. Michelle have served the chair? I mean, this is, I mean, in, in normal organizations.
Normal.
That's how it happened. Ms. Liddell should be the chair and not Ms. Michelle. Hello? Mr. Ellen, you, 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 you chair of organization?
Right.
I know I'm right. And I want to say this also. When we talked about the K O I roads neighbors. Reason I brought that up. Those are the same company that's supposed to do the restoration for the water, the street restoration. The same company. They were the suburb LGC Global. Now, how they the highest bid, of course, when I heard, and they got the contract. Some is rotten and never, no, some is rotten in Flint, not in Ohio. Well, for me to make sense for that, I've been around a long time. How does the highest look, I guess we saw the garbage contract, I guess, not surprises me. But I want, I just want to, it's, I need somebody, maybe somebody to tell me. Why? And you know, I say things are political, you'd be surprised who gives the politicians uh campaign through a PAC. Through a PAC which is legal. So, that's a question to me. How did they just, how did bid, just the contract? Mr. Jared brought up a good question. When you don't, you don't go and replace, like Mr. Murphy. You, you had the sidewalks all around your house replaced.
Religible.
I mean, I, I just said, that's true, that's fact. So, when you spending government money, you don't replace, if it just, if it ain't broke, look.
Don't say shit.
I'm sitting down.
Hello, Madam Chair. I think she left.
No, I didn't wait much.
Oh, okay. I'm sorry. She is declining. Ms. Lee Taylor.
So, I would like to mention again, on the LIS, to the Sackmaster. And they, and you could look at them again, and the downtown employers are not happy with what has happened. Because that business has been cut off for two years. And that, that is just not unacceptable. I mean, I just don't understand why the city doesn't, you know, with the arca money, we could have been the greatest city in, in, in Michigan. In the United States. We had so much money that we could have helped with roofs, furnaces, and windows, and doors, and sidewalks. We could have done it all. But we chose not to do this. Against the public's wishes. We keep making separations. We keep making separations. We have to not do that anymore. We have to not do that anymore. And one of my friends said, maybe I should come up and not lecture to the council each time. Gosh, that's hard. Maybe I should just stand and be quiet. And show peace. The other thing that's important is we locked a young lady out because of police, because you decided to call the police under. Before we could come back up to our seats, you had already put out. That's what I really miss Mr. Miles a lot because he would stop those things. He was very good keeping the community together and showing support. He would get up from that seat and make sure those things didn't happen. I just think we need to value our residents a lot more than, than we know. And does it need to be a resident that says that? Clean with you?
Yes, don't stop.
This is what this looks like.
Back to Louis. He's like, no.
The next speaker is Claire.
Ooh. Claire Lanning. I think that you all that's on the council should pay a little bit more attention to the pain and suffering. The frustration, the depression, the post traumatic stress, and all of that what we been through. I feel like saying, council, behold your people. Uh, a mentor of mine and of many others, General Baker, used to say that we had, in, in fighting for social justice, we had three fronts of struggle. Uh, one is the courts. We have been to the courts. We still ain't got our money. Can y'all appreciate the frustration of the community?
Thank you.
The pain and suffering, no compensation yet. We've been to the courts. We've been to the legislature. The legislature hasn't repealed the emergency manager law that drove us into this disaster. They haven't changed that law. It's still on the books. Snyder gone, but the law's still there. All right now? So, can you appreciate the dis- disgust and humiliation and frustration that the community comes here with? But yet we here, I'll clear out this chambers. Is, is that why you talk to a depressed and oppressed people? So, we've been to the court. We've been to the legislature. We, we did successfully repeal the Public Act Four, emergency manager law, but the legislature tweaked it and kept it in place. You know about that Quincy, he was out there with us. So, now all we got is left is, we've been to the court, the legislature, all we got left is the street. And that's how come some of y'all is up for recall. Cause now we got to turn to the streets. And that's why we got new leadership on this council. If you, if you, at least uh act like you care. Play like you care. So, the struggle continues. Thank you very much.
Thank you. The next speaker is Dr. Jones.
Once again, I'm gonna ask y'all nicely, please stop giving no warnings out. Be a little bit more patient. Now, I mean, if they go too far, like we do how resident there go too far. And I feel that some people come up here with their attention on their horn. I understand that. But every little thing, you look into. Come on, that's, that's, that's the exaggeration. And, and prime example, was when Ms. Elizabeth got into a war. That was terrible. That woman did not hit that man. And for you to say a resident is attacking a resident, and for them, and even today, how quick you came up there to take that, I'll be out here. Somebody, say, ain't nobody gonna stand up to you, stand up to yourself. Liddell, you said it bad as hell. By you constantly giving warnings and the road also candid, and not once you been hit people with warning like that. Control yourself, be a little bit more patient with the community. I advise you to go to an ethical accountability meeting. It is so, the room is real little. And there is a conversation going on that's not involving them at all. But they carry their meeting on like ain't nobody in the room with them. The only person that complained at that meeting so far has been Paul. Only if Paul was picking it up on his camera. They gotta be hearing, but they just going about their bills. Then when the clock is right. They don't say nothing, but you going a little bit too far, you give you a statement. Y'all, like, once again, you watching the clock. You can't wait till the last five seconds so you can get ready to say your time is up. When Mr. Jared was asking that woman questions, Quincy shouldn't have to pick it up. He should have asked the question, his time should stop, and she should have answered.
Yeah, keep saving her.
Quincy had to come in and ask the same questions because Jared, she didn't have enough time to answer Jared's question. That got to end too. And then, y'all got five minutes to talk about nothing, but two minutes to address all these public speakers. And sometimes y'all don't even use no two minutes to address them, but y'all address the personal attack. I want to hear from y'all that y'all are trying to help people save their houses. That y'all are trying to help with the roof fix.
James Moore from the Southwater Ward. I just want to say to the people that we have here in the hall of change. The elected officials as well as our residents. I'd like to use an example if possible. Have you ever heard of the Calway party that they had in the city of Flint? With Northwestern kicking it off and Southwest finishing it up? Go ahead on that lean, stretch your head here a little bit. But I'm gonna tell you this. They don't have no incidents going on, ain't no shootings going on, ain't no fighting going on. Maybe y'all should get with some people in your community and ask, how do we hold this city together? Because they seem to do it quite well at the Calway parties. And not just only Flint Central and Flint Northern and Flint North, I mean, uh, Southwest, Flint Northwestern. But Flint Powers is doing it. They were the rich folks. And they're like, and they're dating a nice party. Beecher is doing it, just Norfolk Flint. I don't know what they doing in Grand Blanc, but I got a good feeling Sports Creek and, 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 and Purvis, they gonna be joining soon too. Because they know how to have a party, a good time. We gotta stop making it look like it's so bad, so dangerous, and somebody don't get killed, because ain't nobody done got killed down here in this chamber. So, quit tripping. And like I said, a good example of what's going on, that we not paying attention to is Sack in our Michigan, because they use their money to help their people. Yes, we want to see Flint moving forward, but we don't want to see Flint's people throughout. And I know you know what I'm talking about, so pardon me.
Thank you. Next public speaker, please. The last speaker is Kovanah Matt.
Kovanah Matt from uh Moose Shack's temporary position in Southwater. How dare y'all come up with a ordinance to protect the city council and the public work and leave us out? You throw in the pocket and hide your hand, but you know what, you didn't hide your hand when they got up. And fighters faced, walk down off that podium, turn that man, still trying to bring it to him. Moose Shack, lower your chair, talk out the side of your mouth, and how dare you talk to this Wendy Carter like you be. A shame you thought.
A shame you forgot. And y'all get out of here, Quincy, Louis, Abby, and Moose Shack. Y'all want that thirty thousand to throw up some money out to the, uh, certain residents, but y'all got to go. You hear me? And I'm looking at you and you looking at me. You don't want me to cry? Oh, yeah? I be waiting to talk and Quincy. Mr. Lee, so you do, you get out your car key, then you hook down here. I don't dare you. You sit your body, try to focus and listen and understand, okay? We got a nine more council person who's doing what y'all should be doing. Father Lord. You know what, I came down here to that, uh, fire risk, but again, and, uh, Louis gonna say, well, how are y'all doing your recruiting? Um, are you going to the colleges and are you doing this? Or are you, uh, telling them they gotta stay here for five years? Nah, they need more money like you still, you, you see what I'm saying? That's what they need, more money. Let's get y'all out, okay? You understand what I'm saying? I'm telling, don't you see what your residents do? Nah, you psych us up. So now we gonna get back at you, you hear me? You got to go, you got to go. See you next meeting.
Our next speaker is the public speaker, council response. Council members may respond once to all public speakers only after all public speeches spoken. An individual person who responds shall be limited to two minutes. Anybody who wishes to address the audience at this time?
Yes.
Council member, if you have a question.
Thank you to all the speakers who spoke. But, um, to Rich Jones and Claire Plon, um, Liz Taylor, um, when I hear you speak, I always think of your mother. We got history together. And, um, I, I really love your mom, and she was near and dear to my heart growing up. But Claire, me and you, we go back a long time. And you guys talk about us, um, putting residents out. We here to do a job. We allow three minutes to speak. But when we up here and we trying to concentrate on resolutions, it's our time to speak and talk, not the residents in the audience. That's not how this work. What works is when they have you sign up to speak, you get to speak at the podium for three minutes. You don't get to just speak out in the, um, audience and just get speaking out. And we supposed to just sit here and don't do nothing? That's not how it works. I'm not going, but say what you wanna say, keep speaking out. But it, we got to have a border in this chamber. And you do not have the opportunity and the right to just speak out in the audience and we supposed to just sit here and cross our arms because you think we ought to let the audience speak out when we give them three minutes? If they wanna speak, let them speak, do a public comment, and give them three minutes. Y'all keep on making that sound like we wrong, we ain't wrong, we want a border in here. We wanna take care of it, and if it's not personal, which I.
Um, ma'am, with the white headphones in the back, I am calling for the order. Please stop being disruptive, thank you. Is there anyone else who wishes to speak during council response? Seeing as how there's no one else, I will, um, entertain a motion for the consent agenda. Where else is the consent? Ah, I'm sorry, Dr. Chiu, before. There's a motion on the court to have the consent agenda, is there support?
Support.
Simple and properly supported, are there any separation? Are there any separations? Seeing as how there are no separations, we will now to approve the consent agenda, which, uh, consists of resolution two four zero one nine zero, which is the appointment for the interrelations commissions made in or our roll call, Mattler. Mr. Moore?
Yes.
Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Mr. Murphy?
Yes.
Mr. Shek?
Yes.
Mr. Jerry?
Yes.
The vote is five yes, zero. Also, the consent agenda has been sent to council. I will not entertain any motions, seeing as how that is our last resolution. I will entertain a motion before a primary.
Chair, come on.
There is a motion on the floor, is there support?
Support.
Simple and properly supported, roll call, Mattler. Mr. Lewis?
Yes.
Yes. You there?
Yes.
You there, huh?
Yes.
We go to five yes, two roll now, it's now eight fifty PM, and I call the general operations committee meeting is now.
Hey, we all family, I see y'all in the morning when we can bump. These people up shut up here tonight.